Let's get started. Good evening. It is 6:30 on Wednesday, November 12th, and I'm calling this meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board to order. My name is Chris LaValle, and I'm the Chair of the Board. Tonight, we will be following the posted agenda. We don't have anyone on Zoom tonight, correct Evan? So, the meeting tonight is in person, and it is being televised live and recorded by Chelmsford Telemedia and will be available on their website and on YouTube. Anita is on her way. Mike will be a little late today. He said he'll be here probably around 7 o'clock. So, we're missing those two at the beginning. All right. First on the agenda is public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues within the jurisdiction of this board but are not the current subject of a pending public hearing before us. Public comment on any public hearings will only be heard during those hearings. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. 285 Mill Road Conceptual Project Presentation.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Doug Robey, and along with my brother Brad, we are the owners of 285 Mill Road. I want to introduce two other members of our group tonight, Greg Michalitis and Jared Grandin, who are the engineers that are working with us on the site. So, our family has owned 285 Mill Road since 1995. We've enjoyed being a part of the Chelmsford community and have been fortunate to have kept the property mostly leased during that time and with a mix of good tenants from high-tech groups to healthcare and to a school. This last group, the Lighthouse School, ended their term with us in August. And now, and why we're here tonight, is we are trying to determine what our next course of action is going to be. Our first option would be to lease the current building. It's a two-story, 31,000-square-foot building. That has its own challenges, although the property is appealing on the exterior. It is in need of some interior work. And so, the second option would be to possibly move forward in a new direction that would involve tearing the building down and building a new facility for a daycare use as well as a smaller retail or restaurant user. And why daycare? Because we have been approached from two national chains that have showed interest in locating at our property. This course would see us construct a new building of around 17,000 square feet, or roughly half the size of our current building. Such a development would come at great cost to our family, but it would also give us long-term stability. So, we've come before you today in this preliminary fashion to see if this new development is feasible and if it is something that the planning board would be supportive of. And with that, I'd like to turn our presentation over to our engineers Greg and Jared. Thank you.
And for the record, Anita is here as well.
Good evening. Greg Michalitis from Argus Consulting. I just wanted, before I turn it over to Jared, who'll go over the site plan with you, proposed site plan. Per my discussion with Evan, I just want to make it clear, we're not here tonight looking for finding applicability. We're simply here, as Doug mentioned, we're in the feasibility stage. We're trying to evaluate options, really looking for your folks' input. We went to TRC. That was very valuable. Got staff input on the technical stuff, so I just want to make it clear. We understand the process. We'll be back if we're going down this road for the finding of applicability and for a commercial redevelopment project. But tonight, we just, any input you could provide us would be valuable. Thank you.
My name's Jared Grandin. I'm the civil engineer for the project with Allen and Major Associates. So, this is map 329 Lot 379-2. We're in the limited industrial district as well as the Route 129 business overlay and the community enhancement investment overlay. So, the project team met with the Technical Review Committee on October 1st, and we have revised and come up with this layout based on some comments that we had received, and we wanted to get your input on it. So, Tenant 1 would be an anticipated daycare user. This user would be approximately 12,000 square feet with 5,000 square-foot outdoor play area. And then, Tenant 2 is a retailer/restaurant user of approximately 4,860 square feet with an 840 square-foot patio shown, but this outdoor space is only going to be necessary if required by the tenant. To our understanding, I mean, the parking and the dimensional requirements meet the town standards and ordinance as shown here for the daycare and retail user. Further verification would be needed for a restaurant user based on the tenant program and whatnot for parking. I also saw that in the zoning, there is a reduction allowed based on shared parking, so we would analyze both tenants' sort of programs and see if that's something that would be applicable to the project. We're going to try to use many of the same grading and drainage paths out there on-site to date, assuming that the existing infrastructure out there is still feasible, and we're able to use that as well as the underground infrastructure. We've gone through all the truck turning with some of the comments that we've gotten from the fire department in the TRC meeting as well as some trash receptacle vehicles. So, we're here to sort of get your input on the project and see the feasibility of coming in for a formal site plan review submission and getting any comments from you guys up front right now. So...
Thank you. Evan, do you have any input?
I would just say, for purposes of tonight, moving forward, keep in mind that the daycare would likely be a Dover use, and under the 129 overlay, retail and restaurants are a by-right use. This would obviously, as the applicant has indicated, would still trigger the COI process for purposes of process. But essentially, you may be looking at a 129 in a COI by-right process that complies with, likely complies with setbacks. That's all I have.
Thanks. All right. We'll go around the board. Saritha?
Just, I guess, for later purposes, you know, what are the abutters of the property in the front?
Saritha, could you pull the mic?
A mic?
Thanks.
I guess some of the things on there is, you know, who are the abutters of the property that would have impact to it? Snow storage on the property that wouldn't impact any landscaping if it's there? Also, just trying to see, if any trees or anything like that need to be removed, where are you placing them on the property, things like that? At the moment, I'm not seeing other stuff, but I could add more by the end.
Marcy?
So, I'm looking at the plans, like, I'm just a little concerned with the restaurant and the school being attached to each other and the safety of the kids and the parents and everything coming to drop off kids at daycare as to specifically, like, and it depends into is what type of restaurant are you looking at putting in there? Is this going to be one that's kind of opened almost all the time, or is this one that's going to be sort of open more in the afternoon or evening when the daycare is sort of out of there? So, that's just, when you have a restaurant and a daycare, people come in and out all the time, so creating a traffic mess in the parking lot and on Mill Road, so that's all I think.
Yeah, we would analyze that, and the Robeys are actively working with their broker, and it's not verified to be a restaurant tenant. I mean, it's just sort of a little bit of...
No, I know. It's still a conceptual, so that's just, it's posted there. That's just sort of like where I am just a little concerned with.
Okay. We'll look into it. Thank you.
I mean, I think I like the idea of the playground with the kind of forest setback. I assume that's with the playground on the far right. Is that right?
It is, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I like that, and, I mean, it does look like an awful large sea of parking, but hopefully that could be considered just... Right, right. So, hopefully the synergies could make some changes. I would have concerns about, as Marcy said, the drop-off and pickup times in terms of chaotic parking lot flow, and I think that would be heightened if there was any thought of the restaurant being a drive-through. I'd be much more comfortable with a sit-down, not-drive-through, you know, silverware kind of restaurant. I think it would be nice to have a new, nice restaurant of that sort as an amenity in that area, and it would be a bonus to the town. And I think also the location just off the highway is probably good for a lot of parents in terms of commuting to and from work, so I basically like the idea.
Thank you.
Anita?
So, I agree with Deirdre. I'm not in favor of a drive-through at that location with the daycare next to it.
Yep.
And if this, I would probably want to put a, some sort of condition that, so long as there are daycare next to it, there's no drive-through.
Exactly.
That would be how I feel. However, that being said, you've got a big parking lot there. And have you thought, like, again, there might be a way to put two entrances into that parking lot?
The town would allow it. I mean...
Possibly.
We're utilizing the existing curb cut, but that would have to be up to you guys to allow that.
I don't know. Like, maybe there might be a way to, even though the building is connected, to make it two separate entrances so you have the safety, right, of our concerns about a daycare next to a restaurant or a busy restaurant or even a drive-through. If there could be something that could completely...
Separate them.
Separate it. That might be something interesting to think about.
We can look into it.
Okay. John?
Yeah, at this early stage, you know, I like the overall concept. I think it's improved as over the previous proposal for the site, if I recall, was the, you know, fast food use that went to town meeting. Town meeting was not supportive, so I think this is a better use for the site. I would agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said. I won't, you know, repeat it, but the main concern would be the drive, you know, preferring a sit-down restaurant or a small retail store versus a drive-through with the, you know, with the daycare there.
Yeah. That's what this proposal is showing. We're not showing a drive-through right now, and we know that, I mean, the restaurant use and the retail use are both by-right. The drive-through would be allowed through a special permit through you guys. So, that's our main sort of thought is to go with a pad site, no drive-through.
Thank you.
Okay. In general, I think it looks good. The one concern I would have is the pinch point where the drop-off line exits and potentially crisscrosses cars going in and taking a left into the restaurant.
Yep.
So, I'd want maybe a traffic flow study done internally on that parking lot...
Exactly, yeah.
...when it comes forward, but...
We could, and, yeah, I mean, we have to look at the potential tenants' operational hours and whatnot to sort of analyze all of this. So, I mean, this is still early, and we're still trying to shop this around a little bit, but, I mean, once there's more details, we'll definitely be analyzing all that.
Yep. In general, it looks good to me.
Thank you.
Joel?
In general, I have similar concern about particularly would want to be able to see that traffic turning, people entering the site are able to be, able to enter and be in the site and off the road fairly quickly so that there's a certain amount of space in the way that you set up the internal flows that encourage people to get into it, because I would be concerned about the left turn line backing up because it's a little bit restricted. The road is restricted there, if I recall. And also to prevent what was happening with the Lighthouse School, which was that the vehicles were parked, basically backed up along Mill Road, seeking to enter from the, from at least my right to the left. And so, would want to make sure that there isn't any, that it's structured in such a way that vehicles get into the site without backing up on either end of Mill Road. And the other thing I didn't know, and this is more just my lack of knowledge, is I don't know, fire needs more than just a single front access. I don't know if they need some sort of side or back access as well, so that would be something I would be interested to know.
Okay.
That's it.
Would you be interested in exploring an entrance from 129 instead of Mill Road?
There's, the grade change back there is pretty crazy.
I mean, it's probably, it's probably six feet from 129 to the back of the building.
And you have that on-ramp onto Route 3 right there.
Yeah, that's right.
I would not want to mess up.
Yeah.
So, I think we're kind of fixed where the building's sitting in the parking area, but we can definitely look at other entrance options if that's viable to have two curb cuts, if you guys think that that would be something that you would be susceptible to.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 42 Grove Street, A&R.
Excuse me.
I'm Eric Lindstedt. I live at 42 Grove Street. Tonight, I'm here just seeking your endorsement for an A&R of two parcels of property, one of them being 42 Grove Street, one of them being an adjacent parcel of land that I already own. Just looking to combine the two.
Okay. Evan, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Any, I'm not going to go around the board, but any questions or comments from the board? I did have one question. There's a line on Lot 10 that says registered slash recorded.
Yes. This one right here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There were, there were, there's a couple of parcels of land that make up that one.
Could you speak into the microphone for me? Thank you.
There's a couple of parcels of land that make up that adjacent property.
Okay.
One of those is land-coorded.
Okay.
One of those is what?
Is a piece of land court property.
Oh.
Went through land court.
Yeah, went through land court.
To put those together.
Yeah, at some point back in the '40s, I believe.
I see.
So, it's going to, so you're looking to put all of that together?
Yes, we'll all be together.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
I just have a real quick question. That paved drive, is that outside of the property? To the right?
Which one?
On the right-hand side that runs up next to the existing dwelling number 42.
If you want, you can look to this screen. There's a microphone right above it.
Yeah, this is actually, this is actually my driveway right now, and it does cut over the neighbors.
So, like, do you have an easement or something?
No, I don't. I don't. It's been in existing condition like that for, again, 40 years.
What are the, what are the two parcels that you're looking to combine?
This one right here. It runs here and this one.
So, the two big parcels?
Yep.
So, there's a lot of driveways that go outside of the property.
Yeah, there is.
All right. Any other questions? For the record, Mike has arrived, but since you weren't here for the beginning of this, you won't be voting.
I don't need to run on this.
Yeah. All right. I will take a motion then from someone other than Mike.
Oh, no. Mike always does the A&Rs.
I can move it. I just can't move it.
That's true. If you want to move it.
All right. A move we approve is A&R 42 Grove Street with no decision as to zoning.
Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Anita. I heard her first. All in favor?
Aye. Abstention.
Six in favor and one abstained. All right.
Thank you.
You've been approved. Thank you. All right. Since we have a continuance for one of the public hearings for Chelmsford Mall, why don't we get that one out of the way? So, we'll take a motion to continue Chelmsford Mall to December 10th.
Move that we continue the Chelmsford Mall hearing until the 10th of December.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Deirdre. All in favor?
Aye.
That is continued. Moving on to 295 Acton Road, Fire Station Number 5.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. I hope everybody's well. It's good to see everybody. Certainly thankful for being here, being in this position, because I think as we show you our plans, I think you'll see that a lot of time, consideration, and collaboration have really gone into looking at our fire station needs, our firefighter needs, and kind of designing a station that will meet the needs, the safety needs of our firefighters. And certainly looking forward to showing you and sharing these plans with you. But I also, while I'm here, just want to thank everybody for the strong showing of support from the Town Manager, Paul Cohen, the Select Board, Finance Committee. Last fall, the Town Meeting overwhelmingly voted for this project, and certainly the voters. We have, the town has 11 precincts. All 11 precincts voted for the fire stations project, so I can't thank the public enough. And then, most recently, we had Zoning Board of Appeals last month for Engine 5, and that passed, and I think largely because of the strong showing of support from the neighbors who came out to the meeting to support our project. So, I am certainly mindful of the strong support we have, and again, we are here to share our designs and get your feedback and try to answer any questions you have. So, thank you. And Racket Guy Ryan, Fire Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Broyles. I'm with GPI. Thank you for the introduction. On behalf of the town, we're here to discuss 295 Acton Road, Fire Station 5. As you can see, this existing fire station is in the Residential B District. The existing station was built in 1966, a one-story, about 2,600 square feet. The project proposes to raise that existing building and proposed to build a 8,700-square-foot two-story, that's gross floor area, two-story fire station with two bays. As previously mentioned, we were in front of ZBA to receive a few variances for setback, maximum floor area ratio and maximum building coverage. Obviously, due to the existing site constraints, there's not a lot of room to provide a fire station that meets the needs of the community. So, we did get approval for those variances. So, tonight, we have a, this is the proposed site plan? Yeah, I think so. The proposal includes new driveway for the fire station, associated parking in the front and in the rear of the parcel, as well as improved landscaping, which are further in the set. You don't have to scroll to it now, but all the proposed landscaping, majority of it is on abutters properties, and there's a lot of been coordination with those abutters to come up with that landscape plan. Due to the size of the site, there's not a lot of room for landscaping beyond, you know, bushes and grass on site. So, improved landscaping around the property, obviously some new utilities for the site as well as an improved stormwater management system on-site, which is kind of non-existent now. All the stormwater meets MASTDPE's 10 Stormwater Standards, and although we don't trigger the local stormwater bylaws far as the more detailed requirements, we did submit for administrative land disturbance review, and we did actually meet a lot of the local bylaws just as best practice for stormwater. So, there is a variety of best management practices on-site, including slotted drain, catch basins, an underground, a couple of underground infiltration systems, and an infiltration trench. There's also new sewer lines out to the main in the street. One is coming from the apparatus bay, which collects runoff from vehicle washing, anything like that, that goes into an oil water separator, and the other one is for sanitary. There's also diesel generator on-site as well as rooftop solar. And we have received a number of comments from the town, stormwater-wise and just in general. We've reviewed them all. We've reviewed most of them with the town already. This plan obviously doesn't incorporate those comments, however, we have reviewed them all and are, you know, I'm assuming our following meeting will incorporate all those comments. None of the comments were that, most of them are minor in nature, that we could easily address on-site. I think with that, I, well, the other thing, our architect is here as well as our landscape architect, if you have any questions for them as well, but at this time, that's it, and I'm open to questions.
Okay. Thank you. We do have some departmental letters. This one?
Okay. The first one is from Jose Negron. Building Commissioner, actually not to the board, but to the applicant, Mr. Broyles, be advised, should the planning board approve of this project, ADA compliance inside and outside the building shall be met per 521 CMR and all Massachusetts Code, adopted code to include IBC, IMC, IECC current additions. The combination, accommodation for parking areas shall meet provision, Chapter 195, Section 17. Minimum parking requirements, one space per 200 square feet of net floor area and one space per dwelling unit for one bedroom, two spaces per dwelling unit for units with two or more, plus one space for every three units or fraction there. Respectfully, Jose Negron. The Water District, Chelmsford Center Water District. Dear Board Members, the Chelmsford Center Water District has no concerns with the proposed fire station project. Please note that the contractor must coordinate with the district for the cut and cap of the existing water service. The Chelmsford Water District will also be providing a new fire hydrant at this location. Backfill prevention devices will be required on both the fire line and the domestic water line. And then, from the Fire Prevention Office, that was actually one question I had, was were they actually going to review it? Yes, they did, both of them.
I hope so.
Yes, they did. Good for you. Dear Members of the Board, regarding the variance request for the construction of a fire station at 295 Acton Road, the Fire Prevention Office provides the following comments. All applicable codes and standards shall be met for the construction of the new structure, including but not limited to NFPA standards, Massachusetts General Laws, CMRs, the Massachusetts State Building Code, and the Town of Chelmsford bylaws. A flammable combustible storage permit shall be obtained and renewed biannually from this office for the on-site diesel generator. A fire flow test shall be conducted and submitted to this office for review. The hydrant currently located in the front driveway shall be replaced with a new hydrant that meets Chelmsford Water Department specifications. Vertical granite curbing on-site shall be replaced with sloped or mountable curbing. With these conditions satisfied, this office supports approval of the variance request. We respectfully request that this letter be entered into the public record and incorporated into your approval process. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Captain, Fire Prevention Office. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Captain, Fire Prevention Office. And DPW, this is from Tony Repucci, Town Engineer. Site plan review, outstanding DPW engineering issues not addressed. Provisions for an enclosed dumpster pad and dumpster should be depicted upon the plan sets. During construction care should be taken to maintain separation of at least 10 feet horizontally from the edge of sewer services to the edge of water services. Where horizontal separation of 10 feet is not practical, both services can be installed closer to each other, but the water service must be 18 inches higher than the sewer service per DEP standards, see Massachusetts Water Law, Chapter 9, Section 9.8. Pavement detail on C-600 should reference superpave mixed design, not top and binder. Total mix depth should be four inches minimum on-site, 1.75 SSC and 2.25 SIC respectfully. And I hope you know what that means, because I do not. Recommended stormwater management conditions. Sewer manhole detail on C-600 needs to be changed to a 26-inch standard cover and frame. Cleanout is required 10 feet from foundation at transition from four inch to six inch pipe. If allowed by plumbing inspector and DPW inspector, cleanout may be placed in the four inches prior to the transition. This cannot be done without approval from both parties. Recommended stormwater management conditions. Stormwater management conditions were discussed on October 27, 2025, for Standards 1 through 7. Additional test pits are required in the infiltration areas to be witnessed by Town staff, can be accomplished after approval prior to drainage installation.
Excuse me.
And then there are a number of recommended general conditions of approval that look pretty standard. And I think that is it. Chelmsford Police Department had no concerns.
Okay. Evan, do you have anything to add? I do know it. Okay. We will go around the Board at this point. Start with Mike. Any questions?
It's good to meet.
Okay. Joel?
Yep. So this is a mix of redevelopment and new development. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, is that reflected in your, in meeting the stormwater standards?
Yes, in the stormwater, we've noted that it's a mix of redevelopment and new development, but this is meeting all new development requirements. I believe when it comes to like the water quality volumes and recharge volumes, we state in our report, you know, the .8 times, whatever. But in reality, we're providing way more storage, so we're meeting new development, but we don't need to necessarily.
How many test pits? Have you done test pits in the recharge areas, in the infiltration areas?
Yeah, we did test pits, that they're on one of these plans and the test pit logs all over the site. I'm not exactly sure where all of them are, but it's possible that, you know, it was noted that one, another one needs, another one needs to be done in an area of the recharge. So if you look at the drainage plan, if you go up a couple sheets, Evan, right there, there's a recharge system in the front and one in the back. I know we did test pits in the front and the back. It's possible that one doesn't land right in the same spot. If I recall, the majority, the soils were all pretty similar on-site, so we don't have a concern with doing another test pit and getting varying soil conditions.
Okay.
So we have good soil, good separation from groundwater.
What is the separation that you have from the bottom of your infiltration bed to seasonal high groundwater?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I know it's at least, it's greater than four feet.
It is greater than four.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And if you did find that there was something that you didn't expect in the soil, it looks like you may have some room to shift it around if you needed to?
There's really not a lot of room. I would say that if there was a change in the drainage design, we'd have to come back to either the Town administratively or not, but we could make revisions to the size of the chambers, either bigger to account for groundwater separation or, you know, just infiltration rate.
Okay.
So we do have some flexibility to write.
Okay.
But we'll, we would evaluate that when we get the results.
Now, is the, so I remember during the Town meeting, it was explained why the station is actually over on one side. Or is that, is the property that small? I just don't recall. Because there's a structure, is there an existing?
There is an existing structure that I think you can see on this plan. This one is just obviously larger than it, so it's kind of engulfed. It's, obviously hugs one side to provide access to the rear of the site.
Okay.
Yep.
And then you aren't, you don't consider yourself a lepul. I know that firefighting foam used to have PFAS. Does the current, is the fire, is there going to be firefighting foam stored there? Or is there going to be some sort of a firefighting chemical or material stored there that has PFAS or some sort of?
So that station used to have foam. We got rid of that, what they used to call legacy foam.
Yeah.
Because of the concerns with people. We got rid of that many years ago.
Okay.
And currently, there are no plans to store foam at that station.
Okay. Okay. So there is no, there is not going to be any materials stored on that would qualify as a pollutant of some kind or something like that?
Just outside of household stuff to maintain the station, that's it.
Right. Right. Okay. Okay. I think, I think that's all I have right now.
John?
My only comment is just on the, just the architectural design. And again, you know, again, I'm kind of a traditional guy. My views may not be reflective of everyone. When I look at the design, it's, it kind of strikes me as modern. And I know you're trying to strike a balance with, you know, this building needs to be around for another probably 50 to 75 years, serving the Town. So I know you're trying to be forward-looking. I'm just wondering, where it's kind of close to some South Chelmsford Village, would it be, would it be advisable to try to put like a different facade on it and try to make it a little more? I'm just trying to head off, again, it doesn't have to, I'm only one person in town, but I'm just trying to think, sometimes in the past, when public buildings go on, public projects, residents tend not to focus on it right away. And then when it starts under construction, they see the pictures, you don't want to get, you know, negative comments, so.
I'm so glad you brought that up, because that was my comment, and I actually have pictures of nicer, better looking ones that I would like. So I'm so glad you brought that up.
Yeah, no, that's my only, just trying to head off a potential problem. Again, I live on a different part of town, but I'm just trying to head off potential issues.
Thank you. So I'm Brian Elliott with the Galante Architecture Studio. It is somewhat of a modern fire station, but the colors and the tones and the palette is still very residential. We kept the scale very low, as low as we could, to try to meet the needs of the station. And so, you know, what you're seeing here is a kind of, you know, we're using a metal panel. It's very durable. And, and we're also using a, it's called a high-pressure laminate, so it's kind of a wood look, looking material. It's actually made out of wood. It's a very pressed, pressed wood. And so, yeah, I mean, it is a very modern-looking building, but, but it still has that residential scale. It still feels very civic. It's very open with the, with the glass, hopefully to be more welcoming. I mean, we studied, we studied many different looks, and I feel like this is, this is just the direction that the, the building committee wanted to go.
Is there a reason why there's a flat roof on it? Like, is that better than like a pitched roof that would look more like a?
It's really to keep the scale down. It is less expensive in the sense that you don't have all of the extra structure and the extra volume to kind of heat and cool or try to control the airflow, you know? So it's just very, trying to be very efficient and very cost-effective. I don't know if it's, if it's better per se. We can handle, we can manage the water better. The flat roofs also allow for us to put solar panels on the, on the roof, a little more easier than having a pitched roof. So those were a lot of the drivers, to try to keep the profile as low as possible, to have as many, have as much space for PV as we can. And it's easier to control the water coming off of the roof, going into the storm drain with a flat roof.
I mean, I'm all for saving money and keeping the cost down, considering we're trying to build three of these, I think. But I kind of agree with John, especially in this neighborhood. I would have, I don't know, maybe something a little bit more architecturally. Because this will be big, it'll be different. It'll be bigger in the neighborhood. I think like people, it'll stand out, and to your point, people don't normally pay attention until it starts going up and then, like, and this is going to be there for, you know, a very long time. And I'd rather do something that's maybe a little bit more pleasing to that area and kind of looks like it fits and, I kind of like this, maybe not something like that. And I get it that it could be more money, but just something that, but I get it, there's a budget.
Anything else? Joel? Anita? Deirdre?
I'm good.
Marcy?
How many parking spaces do you need for the station? Because it looks like there's only five there.
So as we got a letter from the Building Commissioner that dictated parking, however, in this zone, it's, it's really up to the Building Commissioner. So we only have so much space. There's, we provided as much parking as we physically could for visitors, and the fire station is, we work closely with them to make sure that, you know, we have enough parking for everybody. I think we're just constrained on-site with the parking.
Well, I'm just questioning, because it looks like on the, like on the plans, I'm only seeing five in the back, so you're thinking about how many?
Oh, there's, there's one or two. There's a handicap in the front.
Right. So, but you're thinking about how many firefighters are going to be working at that station? Does everyone who's working there going to be able to park a vehicle there during their shifts?
So yes and no. So right now, the, we have two firefighters stationed at that. So we design buildings, obviously to try to go 50 years out. But you're correct, there are six bedrooms, five parking spaces out back. If we are fortunate to get that sixth firefighter out there at some point, yeah, they would have to probably pivot inside the station, that one vehicle, which is why we wanted to make sure we had access to the back of the building to get a staff vehicle or a personal vehicle in the back. To get in, there's a garage door back there, so.
All right, no, that makes sense.
That's kind of, no, but that was brought up, so that's kind of the thought process.
All right, no, that makes sense. I'm just, I work in a building where there's not a parking spots for the people that work there, so it creates a problem in the neighborhood. I don't want to see a fire station, you know, we spend all this money on the Town and that you can't put the employees who need to be there, they can't park there because there's really no parking on Acton Road or, you know, the side streets around there for these people to park their cars, for them to be there for 24 hours to do their shifts.
So there'd be, did I hear there'd be six people, like max on the ship?
So it's designed for 50 years, so there are, there's going to be six bedrooms, but it is not going to be currently six firefighters there.
So the bedrooms, how many, how many, like, I guess my question is, how many would be there on a shift? It would be six?
So right now, it would probably be two. But you designed it for 50 years. So, you know, because the question comes up, why six bedrooms?
Yeah.
We did that with Engine Two. When we built Engine Two, we have three firefighters there, but we build it for 50 years, so we have six bedrooms.
So it'd be total maximum, you're looking at six?
Correct.
Or, because I know, like, my son, in his fire station, they have like two or three bunk, like they'll like, two of Rome, so I wasn't sure if you're thinking six or 12?
So you've designed it because NFPA calls for four members on the truck.
Yeah.
But you also have to think about storm coverage when you add additional staffing. So that's where we get to the six.
To the six.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's your, the five parking spots, six, okay.
Sarita?
Where's the visitor parking?
It's where you want, there's no designated parking spots for anybody, so it would be, you know, accessible, accessible spots in the front and then the other parking's in the rear.
So a potential visitor could block the front of the fire station with their car if they're going there. Where are they going to park, though?
In the rear, there's, there's parking in the rear.
Well, no, I see the five, but you just said there was going to be so many people on there. Where?
Right there, there's the handicap one and there's one.
Oh, I see the handicap. No, the one next to it's actually a hashed off, do not park.
Oh, okay.
Right, is that what I'm seeing?
Right, yes, correct.
So there's only, there's one handicap spot in front.
Yes.
And you have five spaces in the back.
Correct.
And nothing is designated as a visitor space. And potentially, in the future, you're going to have one car parked inside, five spaces out back, depending if there's somebody there who needs a handicap spot or not. And then if a visitor comes, they could potentially block your door. And they could. Because they can park anywhere. I guess that's just a concern of mine. The other thing that's there that I just, do you want to comment?
Yeah, so if you look at the lot right now, it's very tight. So there's two firefighters out right down there. Yes, occasionally, family members will come by to visit, but they don't, and we are very vigilant. You cannot block the stations. There's signage out front, there'll be signage in front of these, so you do not block apparatus doors. So even with the deliveries we get next door, I think people get it not to block the doors. So we do a little more vigilance for the members who'll be working down there, but I think we do a pretty good job of managing it.
How, how big is the space to the left of the building in that alleyway?
Oh, it is dimension somewhere.
It's right there. Oh, it's right there.
14?
Yeah.
14.
Okay. And to the right of the building, I know with the previous building, there was 13.1 feet to the abutters line, and now there's two and a half. Is there any letter from the abutter stating that they're okay with this?
So the abutter to the right was at the ZBA. He has endorsed this project. He has given strong support. And there's a letter, there's a legal agreement, right-of-entry agreement, between the Town and Mr. Erickson.
Does that ever get?
ZBA, he did speak in front of it.
Does that ever get referenced in our stuff?
Huh?
Does that ever get referenced in our documentation?
We can, but we haven't yet.
Okay. And then, I guess a question, just recapping off of the design. Does anyone have a picture of what it currently looks like for that house to the right, that now it's going to be abutting this new design to the left of what that might look like? Kind of of like picture-wise? Just because in North Chelmsford, I know where they put the fire department there after it was built, with a more modern design, a lot of people didn't like the look of it. So I don't know what this is looking like next to each other. Like, how out of place the two designs are next to each other.
I don't, I don't think we have any existing photos in any sort of presentation, but I'm, but we have site photos, so we can, we can definitely kind of track some things down. I'm not sure what shows exactly in the renderings.
I didn't know if they have like Google Maps or something to show the front.
Is this the side? This is the abutter? Yeah, that's the side. And there will be, like, like Chris mentioned before, there will, there will be landscaping along that side.
What will the landscaping look like day one? Like, how long will it take to cover in?
Our landscape architect.
Hello, I'm Barry Hausmer, the landscape architect on this project. What we've proposed is narrow-growing Western Arborvitae, which grows two to three feet a year, and it has more of a compact footprint than some others. I believe, and I don't have the plant list in front of me right now, but I think we were calling for seven to eight footers the day they were installed. And then the columnar deciduous trees next to them would be probably in the 12 to 14-foot tall range when they're, the day they're installed.
And where are those? So there's those bigger?
The, the three larger canopy tree-type symbols, those are columnar swamp wide oaks. The remainder are Western Arborvitae.
And the height of the building versus the height of what the Arborvitae is, are expected to get to?
The Arborvitae's can get 25 feet tall, or perhaps a little more, under good growing conditions. It's always a guess as to how big something's going to get, because it depends on the local environment, but it will, they'll equal the height of the building, I believe. The buildings.
It's about right, what the building's what, 25?
So I think over time, you could expect they'll be equal to or greater than the height of the building.
Yeah, to kind of block the side. But then on the front view, I guess that's kind of just one of the things I'm interested to see what it looks like for what's existing today to the right. I don't know what's to the left of the fire department today. Haven't been over there. What do you guys have on that side?
So we have a similar approach on the, on the other side, the Western Arborvitae again. The, again, the neighbors have been very gracious in terms of allowing us to plant on their property, so we've tried to minimize the footprint we're taking up, but provide a four-season screen that will grow relatively quickly and densely. So it's, it's a similar Western Arborvitae type concept with a few native shrubs closer to the street, so that we maintain side distance down the road.
I can bring something up. Who maintains the landscaping? If it's being installed on neighbors' properties, then over time, if something happens to it, is that the neighbor's responsibility then, or?
So it's my understanding, for, probably for the first year, year and a half, two years, the Town will do what they can to take care of it, especially with the strong support we got from both neighbors. Beyond that, I think- Beyond that, I think it's probably up to the owners. That's why they're very heavily involved in this process, picking out the type of, you know, plants and trees and stuff that they want.
Okay.
And with all the projects of this type, there is a guarantee, an initial guarantee on the plant material, so that should anything die within the first year, they'll be replaced in kind.
Right, right, okay.
Looking at this picture here, how much further up is the front of that building coming from where it kind of is there on that Google Maps, like? Like, how much more forward? Is it kind, it looks not, like, not too much, maybe like another 10 feet, 15?
If you go to the site plan, it has an overlay of the existing and proposed. Keep going, the next, keep going after that one, right there, so. Yeah, it's only, it's a few feet more, four or five. It's, it's not that much farther forward, but it is a little farther towards the street.
Okay, and if you can just go back to the Google Maps. So just, I mean, it looks like the existing one today kind of reminds me of a house with a garage, like, open, right? And now this new one is going to look like a very modern design next to that. It seems like it will kind of clash with the current neighborhood, just from viewpoint, so. I, I don't know. That's just my thoughts there.
Chairman LaValle, could I comment?
Sure.
David Sandin, Honors Project Manager, Left Field. Regarding, you know, architecture, I know it can be very subjective, but we have presented this project to the Permanent Building Committee, I believe, three times. I know twice it has come up. And I have to say that with the constraints of this property, this parcel, this site, and fitting the program, you know, Galante and Associates, it's a matter of fitting the program within a geometric volume. And if we were to, if they were to take the approach of doing a conventional sloped roof, the height of the facility would be drastically out of scale and fabric within the neighborhood. And I, you know, they have looked at the materials, as Brian indicated, with the tones, and also the verticality and the direction of the siding. So I just want to say it was reviewed a few times with the Permanent Building Committee.
Yeah, because if you look, go to the left, look at the left side, like, go to the property to the left, go up one, yeah, next to it, and look at that house. Have, I guess my question is, there's like four or five neighbors on this street, obviously. Have they been invited? Have they seen? Have they, do they know this design? I know the abutter has, and if they're okay with it.
So all the abutters, all of them, I've been in touch with them multiple times. So they have my direct contact, they've been invited to the meetings, and they've strongly supported this project.
And they're okay with the design, the way it is, if they're?
Yep, and they've, they've showed up to, you know, not only ZBA, but they showed up to the Permanent Building Committee. And like was said, we've gone through the design phase three times. I think if you saw the first iteration was a lot more glass, based on the feedback. They kind of tried to bring a more home, warm feeling to it. And this is probably the third or fourth, probably designed iteration of this project. So a lot of feedback, a lot of conversations have gone into it until we've kind of got this project. The other thing is our other stations are flat roof. So for our members, the firefighters, if there's going to be solar panels, we always think about service. We also think of issues, and if we're going to be putting on our members on there, we do prefer a flat roof. Especially if there's drainage issues, we go up, we maintain our own stations. So we would prefer a flat working surface for safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other question, questions or comments? Okay. So I really like this, this plan. I think that knowing that the building committee and the neighbors have been incredibly involved in this, I've been following this for a while. I think that I, I actually like the design. I, yeah. To me, it's fitting of a fire station, and I think that I'm a lot more comfortable knowing that the, that, like I said, the building committee and the neighbors have been involved quite a bit in this project. So I don't have the concerns that other board members do on the design. I think that we're at a point now where we do, I think, need a little bit more final letters from DPW, I think. I think we need updated designs that incorporate that information. I don't think we're ready for a vote tonight, but I think that.
Is this a public meeting we opened?
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think you've gotten some feedback from the board, and I would like to hear the feedback from the public, if there is any here as well.
May I add one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry, I, I did forget to mention, we have formally requested a few waivers as well.
Yes.
So there was some setback for front part, front parking, front landscape buffer, essentially the same setback requirement, and buffer strip reduction on the side, as well as the requirement for a sidewalk along the frontage. So with the exception of the sidewalk, the other ones were due to maximizing parking on-site.
Yeah.
So I want, didn't want to forget to mention that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Are there any members from the public who wish to speak on this project?
Good evening, I'm Paul Erickson. I live at 291 Acton Road, I'm the Director Abutter on the right-hand side. I have supported this project from day one. I know the importance of what the firefighters need, what the town needs, and that. Speaking on behalf of the way the building looks, it wouldn't have been my first choice. Let's just put it that way. I would have liked to have seen something a little bit more fitting into the neighborhood. The blue house to the left, I think, was there since the late 1800s. It was a blacksmith's chop originally and all that. And then you've got the Polly Farm across the street, which was formerly the weight farm and that. And I made a comment at another meeting that Charlie Polly's probably rolling over to his grave right now, knowing what this is going to be. But that being said, I think that the town has done its due diligence. I think that the chief, the permanent building committee, everybody has done the absolute best they can. And I'm looking forward to working with everybody and getting it done and out of the way. So, thank you.
Hi, living today, Princeton Street, North Chelmsford. I wasn't going to say a thing, but when you're talking about the landscaping on the side there, excuse me, I'm in, I was in the same situation many years ago, where the builder had to put the trees around my land. And we actually picked out the trees and stuff. And to this day, we had picked out beautiful pine trees and stuff. And to this day, they are useless, because I guess I should have been smart enough to put in the, my conditions that they took care of the trees. Because as pine trees go, they grow up. And if you don't keep chopping them and trimming them, there's nothing on the bottom. So just to, you know, throw that in to make sure that, and they also, when they planted the trees, they put them on the edge of the boundary. So they have to come on my property to cut them and trim them. So might be something to make sure that they're set back a little bit or something.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public? All right, so at this point, I think you guys have everything you need for our next meeting. At this point, I will take a motion.
Continue, two.
December 10th.
September 10th?
December.
December.
December 10th, okay. Move to.
Go back a month, the two.
Motion by Mike, second by Deidra. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next item is 260 Old Westford Road, Fire Station Three.
Good evening, Chris Broyles from GPI. On behalf of the town, we're here to discuss 260 Old Westford Road, Fire Station Three. This is a, on a 20-acre parcel that contains Roberts Field. It's kind of located to the upper right of the, the property, to the right of the field. This site is located in the Public District, as well as the Aquifer Protection District, which is a groundwater protection zone two. The existing fire station is one-story, and it's about 2,700 square feet. The proposed is a one-story, 4,800 square foot, two-bay fire station. There's also some wetlands to the, the east of the site. And we have submitted to conservation for no intent to be, being within the buffer zone to those wetlands. The site improvements include new parking and driveways, as well as improved landscaping and new utility services. All new stormwater management system as well. The stormwater meets the 10 stormwater standards to the maximum extent. The standard three is for infiltration due to P-VAS that was found in the groundwater. We have elected to not infiltrate at this site. This is something that we'll be talking with conservation more about. So stormwater is detained on-site, and we'll get water quality that way, and we will then discharge from there. Just like Station Five, we also do not trigger the local stormwater bylaw. Extensive requirements, however, we are, we did submit a administrative land disturbance permit. And as I mentioned before, we, but we are meeting additional stormwater requirements, kind of going above and beyond. Stormwater is controlled by a slot drain, like a trench drain, catch basins, yard drains, water quality units, and underground detention systems, as well as a rain garden. There will also be a sewer line, again, from the Apparice Bay that will go into an oil-water separator, as well as a new sanitary line, and a new diesel generator, as well as rooftop solar. There will also be geothermal wells installed in Roberts Field to the left of the proposed fire station. As previously mentioned, we've submitted a no intent to the conservation. We have not been in front of them yet, but we are on a meeting coming up, as well as the administrative land disturbance permit for DPW. We have also reached out to the Water Department. I believe one of the letters that was read was from the, the Water Department. Because we're in the groundwater protection zone, we needed to notify them, and they did respond with no comments. And as previously mentioned with Station Five, we have received a number of comments from the town, and we have spoken to them about those, those comments. And, and they, again, they're things that we would address, and they're not detrimental to the, the existing proposed development as far as meeting those requirements. And as previously mentioned, the architect and landscape architect are here as well to take any comments at this point, and that's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joel, we have some letters for this one.
Yes, we do. First one is from Jose Negron. It's going to sound eerily familiar. "Mr. Broyles, be advised, should the planning board approve of this project ABA compliance, inside and outside the building shall be met per 521 CMR and all Massachusetts Code adopted code to include IBC, IMC, IECC current additions." "Accommodation, a combination accommodation for parking area shall meet provision, Chapter 195, Section 17. Minimum parking requirements: one space per 200 square feet of net floor area and one space per dwelling unit for one bedroom; two spaces per dwelling unit for units with two or more, plus one space for every, per every three units or fraction thereof, respectfully, Jose Negron." And then from the Chelmsford Center Water District, as mentioned, dear board members, and this is for this property, not the other property, although they sound exactly the same. "The Chelmsford Center Water District has no concerns with the proposed fire station project. Please note that the contractor must coordinate with the district for the cut and cap of the existing water service. In addition, the water service to the rear storage area garage must also be properly severed with district staff present on-site during this work. Backflow prevention devices will be required on both the fire line and the domestic water line. Sincerely, Brandon Canata Superintendent." And from, who is this? "Fire Prevention Office, dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the plans submitted for the special permit at 260 Old Westford Road and offers the following comments. All applicable codes and standards, including but not limited to NFPA standard, CMRs, MGLs, the Massachusetts State Building Code, and the Town of Chelmsford bylaws shall be met in the planning and construction of the proposed fire station. Separate permitting for fire alarm and sprinkler systems shall be filed with this office. Review of those plans and sign-off on the building permit will be required. Site access is sufficient. Any future changes to the site plans will require resubmital of updated truck turning plans to this office for review. A fire flow analysis shall be conducted and submitted to this office for review. Vertical granite curbing on-site shall be replaced with sloped or mountable curbing. This office supports approval of this project, subject to the above conditions, request that this letter be included in the public record and considered as part of your approval process, respectfully, Josh Abbott, Captain, Fire Prevention." And from the DPW, again, from Tony Rapucci. "Site plan review, outstanding DPW engineering issues not addressed. Provisions for an enclosed dumpster pad and dumpster shall be depicted upon the plan sets. During construction, care should be taken to maintain separation of at least 10 feet horizontally from the edge of sewer services to the edge of water services. Where horizontal separation of 10 feet is not practical, both services can be installed closer to each other, but the water service must be 18 inches higher than the sewer service per DEP standards, see Massachusetts Water Law, Chapter 9, Section 9.8." I think we'll all be able to recite that one after a few more times. "Pavement detail on C-600 should reference superpave mixed design, not top and binder. Total mix depth should be four inches minimum on-site, 1.75 SSC and 2.25 SIC, respectively. Recommended stormwater management conditions. Sewer manhole detail on C-600 needs to be changed to a 26-inch standard cover and frame. Cleanout is required 10 feet from foundation at transition from four-inch to six-inch pipe. If allowed by plumbing inspector and DPW inspector, a cleanout may be placed in the four-inch prior to the transition. This cannot be done without approval from both parties. And recommended stormwater management conditions. Stormwater management conditions were discussed on October 27, 2025, for Standards 1 through 7. No snow, storage signs need to be placed near the detention system." And that is it. And Chelmsford Police Department had no concerns.
Thank you. Evan, anything to add?
I know comments, Adam.
Okay. All right, any questions, comments from the board? Sarita?
When is this going to COMCOM?
Yeah, next meeting.
The drainage that's going out to the wetlands, I find highly concerning on this, because I didn't see that in the previous, and it's dumping right into there, so I do find that problematic.
Want me to speak to that at all, or?
If you could.
So we have maintained existing drainage patterns on-site. So today, under existing conditions, water does sheet flow into the wetlands. So we're maintaining drainage patterns. And so the stormwater that will go into the, the wetland under the proposed conditions will be treated for, for water quality and the reduced in peak flow. So we are reducing peak flows, as well as addressing water quality. So in all senses, the, the water that drains already into the storm, wetland now will be a better quality and less volume and rate in the future.
So it will be an improvement over the current?
Better way to say it, yes. An improvement over the existing conditions, correct.
What about all the salt and everything used on the property? Is this a bigger parking area or anything?
I don't know. That, that'll be discussed with conservation. There may not be salting allowed, especially within the buffer zone. But, but again, there's, there's, there's improved stormwater features, control, so deep-sump catch basins, water quality. So even if there's an oil spill, things like that, all that stuff's being captured and, and, and before discharging to the wetlands. So it's an improvement over existing conditions, so even if there was some salting and sanding.
There's an order of, what do you call that thing with the work of maintaining and cleaning?
O and M.
O and M.
Is there an O and M?
There is an O and M, yes.
Yep. Marcy? Nothing? Deidra? Anita? John?
No, just a comment. You probably know my thoughts on the design, but I, I will say, I've known Chief Ryan You probably know my thoughts on the design, but I, I will say I've known Chief Ryan for many years and if he and the permanent building committee have done the outreach to the director butters and they support it, then I will, I will support it.
Joel?
So first of all, I want to commend you for not recharging into an area that has PFAS. But I am curious about the fact that you have PFAS in the groundwater here, but not at your other site where there also was a fire station.
So.
How did you come about? How did you come to the knowledge that there was PFAS in the groundwater?
Someone else might have to speak, so if I misspeak, let me know. There has been consultants on board, you know, not us civil engineers doing this, this work. So they have taken groundwater samples onsite. And so it's, the PFAS levels that were detected in the groundwater are just above the reporting level. So because they're in a zone two wellhead protection district, so they need to notify Mass DEP. So, so I think it just through the process of design, we were, we were told that that was the case and so we.
Okay. What, when was it reported? What year was it reported?
I, I don't want to misspeak, but I would assume this year because I mean, this year, yes.
So was this done as part of a due diligence on the part of the fire department? Okay, so you did the same process on both?
So the town has elected to do the, engage in this process and that's how we found out about the PFAS issue.
Okay.
So we are, as discussed, working with Mass DEP, there is a plan to address it.
Right. And so you, so you engaged in the same process on the other properties as well, but did not detect any PFAS there, but you did hear?
So we, there was trace amounts on both properties. Five and three.
Okay. But there, but that was, but that was not in a neck for, that was not an actuary and that's why it didn't trigger a notification?
Right. I mean, I don't want to give you misinformation, so, but there's, you know, we are working with Mass DEP for both projects.
And so you're currently engaged with, I assume you have an LSP working for you in some respect and that person's engaged with DEP on the resolution of this?
Correct.
Is, is the resolution of that going to be interfered by construction of the fire station? In other words, if there's potential remediation, is the construction of, of this firehouse going to interfere with that?
That's not my understanding. No, in fact, I think we, in fact, for engine three, we are in the process of trying to bring in geothermal. So those discussions have been, you know, how do we, you know, address, going through that process of taking the wells, putting that system in while building the station. So it's, my understanding, it can be done.
Okay, but you're cour, you're coordinating with your?
It's coordinating, it's, it's not going to interfere with the process, correct, yes.
Okay. And is the Board of Health aware of and involved in this?
Board of Health has been updated. They have weekly meetings with me, so they are actively involved, yes.
Okay, all right. Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
I, I don't think so.
Mike?
I'm good.
All right. I'm good as well. So at this point, we will open it up to the public. Any members of the public wish to speak on this project? And there are none. So I think we're at the same point on this one. Updating the plans, getting clean letters from the departments and we can continue to the next meeting. By then, we'll also have an update probably from the Conservation Commission, if they're hearing this on their next meeting. So I will take a motion.
I move that we continue 260 Old Westford to December 10.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Deirdre. All in favor? Aye. Animus, and it is continued. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving, if I don't see you.
You too.
Cheers, Chief.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so next item on the agenda. 191, 195 Riverneck Road.
Have you already done the continuance?
Yes, we did. For those who have arrived late, we did continue the Chelmsford Mall discussion to?
December 10.
December 10. Thank you. Just want to make sure no one in the audience is hanging around for that one. All right. So at the last meeting, we talked about finishing, gathering all of the information. We did ask the board members to submit proposed conditions to Evan and those have been submitted and attached to the agenda at this point. I would like to have the board members take a look at those proposed conditions, see if there's anything that, any questions, comments that people would like to ask of other board members, clarifications? And then at that point, we'll see if the applicants would like any comments on these as well.
Well, I just want to comment that I made a mistake and neglected to submit my mull in to the town clerk, so I will not be voting, so Sarita will be voting in my place.
Yeah, thank you for that. That reminder. Any comments from the board?
I just have a question about some of them because I noticed they were in question form down at the bottom. Is that just because they weren't changed around or?
I think, so Evan copied these direct from the emails. Essentially, my take is that people are hoping we can establish these things as conditions. Wanted to throw the idea out there and then finalize here. Mike?
Well, I have one comment on the comment here on the hours of operation stuff. It wasn't at all clear to me why no weekends was necessary, seeing as, as I understood it, most of the safety questions that we had really centered around, you know, bus traffic, truck traffic and kids on the street Monday through Friday. It would seem to me that the weekend was just not particularly relevant to the, to And if the idea is just to limit the project, that's what it does, but, but I don't see that it improves.
So I'm the one that, I, that was my comment. And the reason why was, again, this was, this is in a, it has to go by residential neighbors. People are enjoying their properties. The properties are very close to the street, so if someone wants to enjoy their backyard, they don't want to be hearing trucks. When this got zoned IA back in the day, the intent was for office buildings that ran Monday through Friday. So that was why I was thinking from equality, like for the neighborhood. Yeah, for just Monday through Friday.
Anything else from folks?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment because my, my full input was what is written there and then I added the comment that, but this is not a condition that would enable me to approve this project. And I felt that was important to add because my putting this condition here is not something that, that is going to make the project acceptable to me. Based on at least what I've heard and what I've seen, that I think this project as proposed will have an adverse effect on neighborhood character and?
I'm sorry, adverse effect on?
On neighborhood character. And because of the, the heavy vehicles. And, and so in my mind, I would not vote to approve this project. But if the rest of the board was going to vote to approve it, I would at least want to fence around the lower part of the site. So I just wanted to be clear, I'm not communicating that I'm in favor of, of approving this project by, by putting a condition in here.
I have just another question off of it. Off the outdoor lighting and the shielding, is that something that we can ask for or not? Because like I noticed it was a question on there, but I don't know the answer.
The lights are required in the, in the lighting bylaw to be shielded.
Okay, so that was a yes to that.
And not to go into the neighboring properties, not to shed light.
So that's built into the?
And what about this nighttime business operations? Was there any clarification or is that something they would, they just comment to, I guess?
We could discuss it and see if we want as a board to propose that condition and then see if the applicant is amenable to that.
Okay. Because I think what I read on here at least was, it seemed like somebody was saying 5:30 AM to pretty much 2 PM was for truck traffic. Is that on the one comment?
So this is, again, I'm kind of going off of, like what Joel said, right? Like if, I'm only one person, my concern is the, the truck traffic and the impact to the neighborhood. I've been pretty clear about that. I was pretty clear about that with Riverne, when Davis came here with Riverneck Road. I think I've been pretty clear with that with other neighborhoods in Chelmsford. So if this worked to be, you know, we're going to have a list of conditions and what's concerning to me is around the safety of the neighborhood and the school buses, then I would like a condition, but it's, you know, still to be discussed. This is?
Yeah, no, I was just curious because I saw like the 5:30 to 2:00 and then I was just seeing the other question.
I was trying to figure out when the, when the school bus was going by.
Yeah, okay.
The challenge though with that is that the school buses are almost the entire day.
All day, yeah.
I mean, there's a very small window without buses.
Yeah, I should understand, so thank you. Just wanted to remind.
So that was, I know my, the one thing I put in there was specifically about the hours of operations. It doesn't show up here, but that's okay because a bunch of, a lot of us put in the hours of operations. That was a concern to me as well in order of missions is the hour operations, especially for those trucks, the heavy trucks to be moving too early in the morning or too late in the evening, during the time of buses, kids sitting on the road. That's a concern.
Yeah, I think, I think historically, we have done some limit of operations, but I think in this case, limiting operations around the school buses is going to be incredibly difficult, if not impossible, because that really limits most of the day. So I, I actually can't see us conditioning that. Any other questions, discussion? All right. At this point, I will open it up to the applicant. Any feedback, concerns, questions on these proposed conditions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, representing the applicant. Yes, we, we were provided a copy of these comments or proposed conditions and we have been through them. And I would like to first start off by saying, as you'll recall at the last meeting, I did provide a presentation to the board as to why we believe this project meets your special permit criteria and actually went into some detail to describe how that was accomplished. So as you know, we have been through site plan review, traffic and safety peer reviews, fire and police have weighed in, sewer has weighed in. We've satisfied the environmental aquifer protection requirements. We've satisfied buffering and fencing. So we do believe we've met all of those criteria and have explained to you why. However, we did, we do appreciate the fact that those comments, your comments, your proposed conditions were shared with us. And I said, we, we did go through them quite extensively. And so I guess what I'd like to do is just run through the top and we'll provide you our thoughts and input on the conditions. First, with respect to whether only trade contractors would be allowed to the, be allowed for the front contractor building and contractors with heavy machinery will be prohibited from the front building. That, I don't quite understand that. Clearly, we want to be able to operate any, any use within that building or within both buildings that are allowed by right in that zone. You've heard me say it a number of times, we're in an industrial A zone. So we, we are just asking for permission to, to, a special permit for the outdoor contractor's yard. And so to, to, how do you limit the front building contractor yards? I mean, they're not going to have tractor trailer trucks or any of the bigger equipment we have, but it is possible that one of those small trades persons might have a backhoe, pallet jack, you know, some of that kind of stuff. So we don't see where the board would limit what we do in that front building to, you know, at all. We should be allowed to operate whatever use is allowed by right. That's all we're asking. And if we were proposing to do a use in that front building that required a special permit, we got to come back. So I don't understand where you're coming from in limiting what we do in the building. All we want to do in the building is what's allowed by right and what would be allowed by our special permit. So I, I don't quite understand. I've never seen a condition that, you know, somehow limits by right uses. With respect to the snow storage comments, we're 100% in agreement with that condition. Only on impervious surfaces and, you know, the snow maintenance will be included in the O and M and we will only store snow in the areas that have been approved. So with respect to the second condition, we're, we're in full agreement. External maintenance of machinery and vehicles, we are fine with the prohibition that that will not be allowed outside. Any maintenance of vehicles will be done inside. And if it's things like washing the, the equipment, that's why we have the drains in the, in the internal bays so that that water will go where it's supposed to go. It won't go out into the outside. So we're in full agreement with the condition that external maintenance will be prohibited from the site except for inside the buildings. As I have comments four, five, six, they are a requirement that we install all of that traffic safety signs and lights and, and crosswalks. We're in agreement with all of that. That was suggested by your traffic peer reviewer. I will remind you that the peer reviewer determined that we would not be detrimental to the overall roadway or the safety of the roadway, that the roadway, although people cross the center line, the roadway is built and is wide enough that trucks can be, cars and trucks can operate safely on the roadway. So that, those roadway improvements are not even a mitigation to a problem we're creating. It's my client actually improving the overall safety of that roadway for everyone. It's not mitigating what we're doing wrong. It's actually just to make it a better situation for everyone. And so my clients are in full agreement with doing all of those intersection and signal improvements that are provided here. Let's talk a little bit about the parking lot fees and the sidewalk fees. The town has a policy and regulations that outline what people are required to do when they're doing projects in town. And all we're asking is to be held to that policy and procedure. So for instance, the parking fee, as we've calculated it, would be somewhere around $23,500. And it's written right in the town's policy that that money is to be used for traffic safety improvements. So our parking fee would be about $23,500. As I've just agreed, my clients are voluntarily going to do $36,000 in traffic safety improvements. in traffic safety improvements. So I have to believe that paying thirty-six thousand for all those traffic and safety improvements is far superior to the town than us giving you twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars and letting you do that work. So in terms of the parking lot fee, I think we've more, almost one and a half times satisfied the required twenty-three thousand five hundred by agreeing to do over thirty-six thousand dollars worth of traffic safety improvements. And again, those improvements are not mitigating something we're putting on the road. It's mitigating existing conditions of the road. So I think using that money in lieu of the parking fee is very reasonable. And as I said, the town's going to get almost two and a half times what they would have got through the parking fees. As far as sidewalk fees, again, the town has a very clear policy and has acted in the similar manner in all projects that I've seen in town and that our engineers have worked on. And that is, you are responsible for providing enough money to install sidewalks along the entire length of your frontage. You'll recall that Mr. Dirk originally suggested that because we are increasing traffic by sixteen percent, that we should pay sixteen percent of the estimated two and a half, three million dollars it's expected to cost to put sidewalks along the whole length of the roadway. An interesting concept, but it is far outside the scope of anything this board has ever done with respect to sidewalk fees. So what we are suggesting to do, and after Mr. Dirk suggested that, we then sent him all of the information on our frontage and our, our sidewalks. And estimated that the cost, the sidewalk fee to put sidewalks along our frontage would be thirty-nine, a little over thirty-nine thousand dollars. Mr. Dirk subsequently agreed that that number was correct. And that if that was what the policy was for the town, that is what we should pay. And that's what we're suggesting we will pay. We will pay the thirty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars that your peer reviewer agreed would be the cost of putting sidewalks along our entire frontage. So with respect to parking fees and sidewalk fees, we are not only agreeing to pay what the town has consistently applied to projects in town, but by doing that thirty-six thousand dollars in roadway and safety improvements, we're exceeding the parking fee by, it's almost one and a half percent. So those are what we would agree to in terms of conditions on parking and sidewalk fees. Hours of operation? Again, we are not asking to operate outside of the hours that other businesses are allowed to operate in this town. We are in an IA zone. You don't have specific regulations that talk about when businesses can open and close. What you have is a noise ordinance. And that we are required to meet that noise ordinance in early morning and late hours. We see no issue with us meeting your noise ordinances. You know, the operation of this is set in the back. And, you know, if you draw a line from there to the residential homes that we're trying to protect, it is a significant distance. And the fact that we're going to be operating safety inspected, registered vehicles and equipment. You know, they have to have mufflers, they have to have the sound. We will meet your sound requirements with respect to our operations. But we don't understand the basis for limiting those hours beyond the, the, the noise regulations and the other restrictions that the town imposes. Weekends, I, I, you know, the, the fact that we're trying to protect, you know, the concern of the board is that we're going to have traffic during school hours and bus hours, doesn't apply to weekends. And although my clients don't regularly work on weekends, some of those smaller contractors up in the front building, they're going to work on Saturday. Heck, you might see some of them working on Sunday. But they're certainly not going to violate your noise ordinances or cause any trouble to the neighborhood coming and going. So we can't agree to limitations of our operations. Especially if it's intended to keep our trucks off the road at the same time that the school buses are coming and going. Let me remind the board that our client, the way, in terms of a typical day, we're going to have three drivers that are going to report to the site around six o'clock, maybe a little after six. And on a typical day, almost every day, we're going to have three vehicles leaving the site in the morning. Three trucks and three coming back somewhere between three-thirty and five-thirty at night. Now, recall that what my client does is they store their equipment on this site. And then when they have a job, they move it. So they will be leaving the site once, moving the equipment and the trucks and leaving them at the job site. At some point, whether that's days, weeks or months later, yes, they will have to come back once. And they'll be there until they're sent out to another job. So the only trucks that are coming and going every day are three trucks. And that's, the drivers are taking the trucks, going to the job sites and working on the equipment. So we're not going to have multitudes of trucks leaving the site in the morning and coming back during rush hour. At most, it'll be three or on that odd chance that it's, happens to be a day where we're moving equipment to a job. You know, that might be another truck and trailer leaving on that day. But that's not every day. That's only going to be when a job is started or when a job is ending, we'll be bringing stuff back. So again, we, 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 we want to be able to operate our businesses under the same terms and conditions that every other business in this town is, is required to operate on. As far as the fence, I believe we have proposed fencing around this entire site.
That's what I thought, I just couldn't remember.
Yeah, oh yeah, and buffers, and buffers down both sides, along the back, along the front.
I prefaced it with, I, I don't remember because I haven't looked at the plan later.
Okay, well, I just want to assure you that yes, there is provisions for fencing around the whole site.
Thank you.
Someone said that all loading and unloading of trucks or delivery trucks must be on our property and is prohibited from taking place within any public way. We certainly can agree to that condition. We wouldn't be allowed to do that in any event. Can we establish limits on the hours of operations? Again, we don't generally do night business. However, as you know, my client does work for a number of municipalities. And if they have an emergency or in the case of snow plowing, they, they need snow plows to go out on hot hours. We're going to have to do that, but your bylaws provide exemptions for that when you're working for municipalities and safety. That you can leave your site coming and going. And that's all we're asking for, in those emergency situations, we'll be leaving the site. Now, what would be leaving the site? If it's a, a repair or something, it could be a truck and a piece of equipment. If it's a snow emergency, these guys have six plows. They have six trucks that would leave the site to go plow roads. But that would only be in a state of emergency, you know, where they have to plow the roads. Not every day, nothing like that. And again, your own bylaws and noise ordinance, which actually restricts operations of equipment and trucks, has a provision for municipal work. So we couldn't necessarily violate your noise ordinance at two AM in the morning because we have a client that needs something done. But if we have a municipality that needs their streets plowed or they have a water line break or something, your own bylaws allow us to, to violate your noise ordinance and get out of, get off the site at night. So again, we're just asking to have the same requirements that your bylaws and your policies require. Last but not least, in terms of conditions, outdoor lighting, we're all set. We, we'll agree to any condition that says we have to meet your lighting laws by shielding and, and blocking, of course. I mean, there's no condition there. So, I mean, of all these conditions, we've agreed to the vast majority of them. And we're, with respect to sidewalk fees and parking lot fees, we just ask to be treated the way you treat every other project and we will more than satisfy that. As I said, we're, we're happy to pay the, the cost of the sidewalk along our property. We're happy to pay the parking lot fee. But I would suggest to the board that rather than hitting us up for the parking lot fee of twenty-three thousand, you allow us to do thirty-nine thousand dollars or thirty-six thousand dollars worth of traffic safety improvements that your peer reviewer suggested, not to mitigate our impacts, but to just make it safer. And we've agreed to that. Other than that, the only thing that we can agree to is limits on the type of uses we can have. All we're asking is to be able to do the allowed by right uses. And we can't accept unreasonable restrictions on our operation hours. Because you really don't have a bylaw that allows you to do that. And, you know, it's all based on the noise. And again, you know, you're, you keep pointing to, we want this stuff done. We want to limit your hours so that we can protect the public and the traffic safety. But the truth is, we've already shown you that we're not being detrimental to the, to the traffic or safety. Or the road itself. That's just a perceived error, issue that is not being generated by our project, but it exists today. It's the, the fault of the town or whoever, okay? So again, I think my clients have agreed to all the reasonable conditions you've asked. The conditions that you've placed on other similar businesses in the IA zone and that are detailed in your bylaws. So we'd ask the board to finalize these conditions so that you then have a basis for voting on this project. I guess erroneously, I left the last meeting understanding that we would in fact have conditions to negotiate and to discuss with you. And that those conditions would be part of a draft notice. And we were fully expecting that the board would take a vote tonight. And quite frankly, I think it's your job to finalize these conditions based on our input and then vote this thing.
Thank you. I do want to address a couple of the conditions that you had pointed out since they were my suggestions. The first one, the trades contractors. The reason why I was suggesting that is because one of the properties that you had talked about in your testimony was the West Tech Drive as being an analogous use to what's currently proposed for the front. I took a look at Google Maps, a few dates, and I saw no heavy machinery being used in that area. No asphalt, no heavy construction. It's, it's really the trades, the trades type of contractors. And that's why, given the traffic study and how the traffic study was done as using those types of, of models, I didn't want to see additional heavy construction being added in there. And adding to the heavy issues on Riverneck Road.
But when you say heavy construction, remember that our, our, if we get the special permit for the outdoor storage, the only outdoor storage associated with the front part of the building is a very limited space.
Right.
Right, very limited.
Yep.
So I.
Which is why I'm surprised that you didn't agree to this one because it's unlikely that.
Understanding what you're suggesting, because what I thought you were suggesting is it could only be trades people, right? What if a small, light manufacturing, you know, a machine shop wanted to go in there? I don't think you'd have a problem with that, I mean, they don't have big equipment, they probably wouldn't even store anything outside.
I would consider that a, I would consider that one of those trades contractors, a machine shop.
Okay, so how, how, help me to understand how you could, how we would draft that condition about limiting the use of the front building to trade contractors only. How, wouldn't it be better to write the condition as a prohibition? Like saying the following uses aren't allowed out there, and then how do we define that?
I would be fine with that. The, the ones that I have listed here as examples are the typical ones that you would see, those more heavy machinery dump trucks and things like that. The heavy construction, asphalt and landscaping.
So to, just to simplify this. The, the, the outdoor contractor's yard. The decision could contemplate that the outdoor contractor's yard, which is the heavy machinery for our definition, is only for the rear part of the site.
Okay.
The front allows any uses allowed by right. And specifically is prohibited to include.
Asphalt.
The, the, the heavy component related to outdoor contracting. Which is the, which is the outdoor storage of heavy equipment.
Right.
Heavy stock.
And you wouldn't consider a mini excavator or a pallet jack heavy equipment?
No.
Chris, I mean.
Yeah. Are we, are we okay circling back to this? Like, can we get through the rest of them and if this is where you guys are hung up, I mean?
Yeah, we could.
We could chat, I mean.
Yeah.
Obviously restricting what machinery is there is going to limit the tenants. But I mean, if we're going to get through this whole meeting and this is the make or break, I'm willing to hear you guys out and come up with a happy medium for the both of us.
Yeah, we could circle back.
Okay.
I also wanted to address the sidewalk construction. And the parking fees. I, in my number seven, I did probably not eloquently mention that I would, because of all of the work that you would be doing for four through six, I agree that the parking, the additional parking fees wouldn't be collected. However, on the sidewalk construction, typically, when we look at a project, it's really difficult to see where the traffic goes. There are multiple ways the traffic could go. And so looking at the sidewalk contribution, it's really easy to say, because there are so many other paths that the traffic can go, the only true path for all of the traffic is right in front of the property. This site is very different because there are only two directions that this traffic can go. And it's all on Riverneck. So one hundred percent of the traffic being generated from this project is going onto Riverneck guaranteed. And so that's why I proposed a different way of approaching this than typical projects. Because typical projects, you don't have the scenario. Typical projects, it's multiple different ways that the traffic can be dispersed and spread out, the impact. Whereas this, all of that traffic is on Riverneck. And because of that, the percentage of sidewalk on Riverneck is negligible for this project. And so that's why when the peer reviewer said that typically a fair share estimate is based on traffic volume, that would be a good way to do it for this project because all of that, that traffic were guaranteed to be on Riverneck Road. And so the sixteen percent increase is what I would consider a fair share for Riverneck.
Three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Riverneck's a very long stretch of road.
How is it that when we approve a project on Bill Ricker Road and the traffic leaving the site has no choice but to get onto Bill Ricker Road and go right or left? The same way we have no choice but to get on Riverneck and go right or left. Yet, when there's been sidewalks required of those projects, we've never said, hey, what's your percentage cost of the whole, you know, the whole Bill Ricker Road sidewalk that needs to be built? We, we never approached a project like that.
Because Bill Ricker Road's not building an entire sidewalk. Most, a lot of that's already built.
I know, but it, it, it's not like we've said, well, whatever isn't built on Bill Ricker, you need to pay your fair share of that entire cost. I mean, I just, to say that this is a different scenario that all of our traffic has to go one way or another on Riverneck, that's true of every project.
No, it really isn't.
I've been doing projects here for 30 years. That's the first time I've ever heard that one.
Well, then maybe we should change how we do things.
Maybe you should, but $385,000 for
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
I just, and Evan can, Evan hasn't been doing work here as long as I have, but $385,000 for a site-zoned IA industrial that purchases a site with frontage on a public road in the town of Chumpsford has forever been charged based on the frontage for sidewalk. Either we build it or we pay a fee. The rest of the traffic mitigation we've provided in the 39, $36,000 worth of traffic impact that we've proposed for the site. $385,000 to build on an industrial piece of land in the town of Chumpsford, if that were to be applied to every project, you just would never see anybody building here.
I'd get a plaque built.
It'd be ridic, it's completely over the top. That's just, I don't know if, Evan, if you can think of any other project that that logic's been applied?
I don't want to belabor this, but the methodology has been consistent as the, as the applicant articulated. The 385, to put into context, would be more than what 255 Princeton paid, which was 250. The town has no history of charging that, that amount, that scope and scale, the sidewalk contributions. You know, editorially within the scope and scale of this project, I mean, that number is, it's a crazy number.
Well, so is 2.5 million dollars for paving or for sidewalks on Riverneck. That is a crazy number, too.
Agreed, agreed. But that's a, presumably, that's a town, a town desire. So, so that, that's why the historic methodology has been consistent. Every project is going to, is going to pay, but it's based upon their, their frontage. Maybe there are alternative methodologies to consider. I'm just, I'm just not sure that you
But a project that's going to increase, say, traffic by 100 to 200% would pay the same as a project that would increase traffic by 1%.
My understanding is the towns always assume that it's the town's responsibility to maintain the roads.
Let me put this on a, a agenda item to revisit this.
Yeah, now, when it came to like, an extremely use that had extreme increases of heavy truck traffic, then I, I could, I could see where you would have a discussion where you're considering that particular impact.
Well, that, that particular impact would be more because we're doubling the number of truck traffic. I tried to be a little bit more reasonable than that.
Agree, but it's not, it's not, it's not in the scope and scale of, let's say, a 270 Bill Ricker or what Davis Company brought to town. It's not a large number of, of heavy truck traffic.
But it is compared to what's on there now.
Right. And your, your peer review, your peer reviewer indicated that you, you would visibly see more trucks.
Yeah. It's double.
Yeah. So, I think, I think you may, I think we may be struggling with the, the distinction between visibility and roadway impacts. And then the sidewalk contribution doesn't really address either of the two. You understand what I'm saying? It'd be different if the town had a, a, like a, a roadway impact, which would be questionable, but what we do have is a, is a sidewalk contribution. And so, like I said, the methodology's been consistent. You know, Riverneck Road is a, is a unique situation compared to other parts of town.
But whether it's a unique situation or not, I don't think we can start implementing new methodologies. You know, I mean, I don't think that's
Well, I'm just going based on what the peer reviewer had initially suggested.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, in hindsight, ideally, that never would have made it to paper. But it's not, it's just not consistent with anything the town has ever contemplated.
But it's obviously something that's consistent with other towns.
It very well could be. We'd have to do that research as part of, you know, further consideration.
I mean, again, like, we may want to revisit our policy because you and I were just at a tri board meeting on Monday. We're, you know, we're facing three and a half million dollar deficit and, and that's for a level service. And the town needs to be looking at, you know, everything, including permits, fees and this stuff, right? So, we may
Within, within reason. I can tell you, a 385 ass on top of all the other ass.
But I think we need to revisit this policy. I think
Yeah, that's fine.
We need to bring in
I mean, ideally, DPW would be at the, would be at the table. Again, I don't even know to what extent DPW gets copies of your peer review memos, but you don't have anything in writing from them that they agree with any of the recommendations. You know, it's, that, that may be, it may be, maybe it's assumed that whatever the planning board approves is, is what gets implemented. Fortunately, the, you know, the recommendations for Carly or Riverneck Road are fairly straightforward in nature. But imagine if that was more involved. You'd likely need DPW involved. You'd need the SLUT board involved because they're the roadway and roadway commissioners.
Mast D O T.
Well, not, not, fortunately not for that.
Not for this one.
I, I can appreciate the boards wanting to, you know, reconsider this policy and, you know, maybe change it. And, you know, that, that's your right, and you certainly have the ability to do that. But I'm asking you to apply the current rules to this project. And I think overall, we are more than meeting your typical requirements.
I'd, I'd be willing to withdraw this one at this point and go back to the proposed based on
Percentage of frontage?
Yeah. I don't like it, but I'd be willing to do that.
Thank you.
You ask questions or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I have a couple. I just, so I needed some clarification. Does the applicant have Sanders?
We do.
And do you plow both municipal and private?
Just municipal and for the state.
And another question is off of kind of like number one that we had. I know that we were going to come back, but I just am curious because I think the intent is that no additional heavy equipment would be coming and going from the property. So, are the people that are in those front areas, are they allowed to have equipment in the back for storage?
For the front building, you're saying?
For the front, the front buildings, like if one was to have something that had more heavy equipment and things like that, are they allowed to park it in the back area?
Like where our proposed building is? I would say no to that.
Because that goes a little bit off of number one with the clarification. I think, I think the intent is no extra equipment coming and going from the property besides what you're talking about, but I don't know if that's what your intent was.
So, in other words, the outdoor contractor's special permit, if granted, would only apply to their company
To their business, not the
and their business, not to the leased businesses in the front. Is that what you're?
I think so. Like, we don't want any extra equipment up in the front, like either, like, not like you want parking a loader up front. It's, it's having the prop, the stuff coming and going is what we're trying to prevent.
Up here or the back?
Whoever, whoever is renting that front section.
You're talking about like
No, she's talking about those businesses.
These businesses, pardon?
This businesses. Now, the, the permit we've asked for for the outdoor storage is obviously with respect to my client's business and heavy equipment out back.
Correct.
But we've also asked to allow outdoor storage for these bays as well, but it's very limited. See, it, it's a, it's a 16 by 25 foot bay. Each one of these gets one of those.
And I got that, but is the intent that they're going to be able to have heavy equipment there?
No, they, well, they might have a small piece, no heavy equipment.
That's back to where we were chatting about
But materials, right? So, this plumber might keep a rack of pipes there.
No, I, I get that. And when I'm thinking heavy equipment, I'm thinking a loader and excavator.
I think what my client has said is we are willing to
A dump truck.
draft a condition that won't allow us to, to park heavy equipment, you know, big trucks,
Yeah.
backhoes, all of that.
And that's why I was saying the heavy equipment's not allowed as a, as part of the by right use.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just want to clarify because you had mentioned if somebody had a loader, how are we going to prevent them? But it looks like it would be prevented.
And again, I think my client has said that we would be willing to agree to a condition that the only outdoor storage associated with these bays would be materials and light equipment associated with those trades. I think that's what we're all trying to get to.
I think, yeah, I, I think they're
I think we can agree to that.
Yeah, that's what I just want to clarify.
If you guys are thinking that the big heavies that we would have in the back would be here, that's not our intent, is to rent to somebody with, because it, basically, that one machine would take up a spot. I mean, if they wanted to, they, I guess they legally could leave it inside. It's just the outside portion of it, which would take up the whole bay. But the intent is not to rent to somebody with one big excavator. I mean,
And what if they have plow equipment and everything else?
Well, plows are, yeah, plows would be allowed. I mean, that's something that it would come with, like a pickup truck.
They'd be coming and going.
But it'd be a pickup truck.
We distinguish between light and heavy.
Okay. That's, I'm just asking clarification questions.
And I think we can come to an agreement on a restriction for heavy outdoor equipment storage in that, in the front building.
Okay. And then another thing I just wasn't clear on is when we were talking about four, five and six on the top portion of the conditions. On four, five and six, the intent is that they are fully paying for and designing for all of those, excluding any of the other money that they're talking about paying. Because I heard mention of some thirty
Yeah, so the parking fees, these would be done and paid for in lieu of the additional parking fees.
Okay, so they would be paying for all that? We don't know what the cost is.
Yes, 36,000.
That was 36,000. Okay. I just thought you guys were throwing that number out.
No, no, no. We've actually had estimates.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that.
And that is comparable to the 23,000 that we would just normally pay to the parking lot fee for si, for road improvement.
And what happened if that came to be more than the 36?
But they're paying for it.
They'll pay it, whatever it is.
I'm just understanding this by
Yeah, no, and I think the condition was proposed, we would do all of this. And we're just telling you, we got some estimates so that we at least had a ballpark of what it was going to cost. And we got very detailed estimate. It was like 36,000 and some change.
Okay. And then the, we talked about the sidewalk line. The only other question I have, because I'm not familiar with it, what is the bylaw with the noise ordinance that talks about the municipality exemption?
So, the, the noise bylaw has exemptions that go beyond municipal work. Any contractor that's doing emergency work is exempt from the, from the noise bylaw.
What makes something an emergency?
To perform that work.
To, 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 yeah, to perform the work. I'd have to bring up the provision, but the way we've, the way we've interpreted and administered it is if you're a plumber and you provide a 24-hour emergency service, you are allowed to come and go from the site. Generally speaking, coming and going from the site in and of itself won't violate the noise bylaw. It doesn't generate noise. But if you were, if you were a contractor doing, let's say, assembly, and for some reason, there was an emergency that required assembly work, that would certainly generate, generate noise. So, as I mentioned, the typical emergencies are contractors that are coming and going as part of a 24-hour service, service coverage. But again, the, the typical comings and goings in and of itself don't, don't generate noise, which, which explains why the town doesn't have a hours of operation bylaw. Companies have, you know, third shifts, whether they're office, manufacturing. That, that, that activity in and of itself doesn't, doesn't generate noise.
And I think when I asked earlier about the Sanders, how many did you say you had?
We have six that leave that yard during snow operation.
They have plows and Sanders?
Uh, yes.
Or they mix?
Yeah. And no salt or sand or any liquid is stored on site. We work for municipalities and the state that supplies the salt.
But your vehicles would have it, have the salt in them ready to go?
No.
No.
No?
They leave empty.
Yeah, we're not allowed to leave. They think, they call it, they think that you steal it. So, every time you leave, whatever site has to be emptied, then they do a visual.
Okay, thank you.
So, if they're doing work for Westford, they'd leave, empty truck, go to Westford salt storage or sand storage, load up there. And, and if they had any left by the end of the day, they got to bring it back. They're not allowed to take it.
Oh, interesting. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? In terms of hours of operations, I think it's going to be challenging to do any restrictions on this one. Unless folks disagree.
I just have a quick question on that. Is there anything to be done for left or right for hours? Like, limit direction to prevent something? I don't
I'm not sure what that would accomplish.
Sometimes, like, for example, the paving company in Westford, right? They're only allowed to take right-hand turns or, I forget what, right, left-hand turns during so many hours because they're preventing the traffic from heading one direction versus the other.
Yeah, but we have the problem in both directions.
The neighborhoods are on both sides.
Yeah, okay. I was just asking the question. That's it.
And it's a long road. You're hitting a lot of neighbors.
Gotcha.
So, at this point, I think unless people feel strongly, we would not do any special conditions on hours of operations?
I would agree.
Okay. So, all of the other conditions were agreed to except for the, the sidewalks. And the, I think we've got a decent draft of number one for the trades. The fences there. So, I think we have a decent draft of the conditions, if people are okay with that. At this point, this is still a public hearing, so I would like to open it up to the public for comment. Okay. There being none?
Nope.
Nope? Yes.
Good evening. Eric Finney, Clark Ave. I spoke last week and raised some concerns. I'm a little troubled by the hours of operation, like no conditions. I, I understand that, you know, it's the coming and going. There's no, you know, concern about it impacting like the noise ordinance. But I, I learned that the, on the Commonwealth's website, you guys operate a 24/7 services. I, I'm concerned about that. You know, the neighborhoods are actually close. The proposed site is .2 miles from my street. I, I will hear the noise. I hear Pro AV with some of their trucks that have backup lights. I can hear backup lights over on Apollo in that complex. So, I don't agree with that, and I have concerns, and I ask you to, to be considerate of that. The other thing is, I've learned that there have been other contract yards proposed in town near, with a close proximity to residential neighborhoods, and those have been denied. This one's pretty close. I appreciate the owner's willingness to work with the town and make, you know, amendments to their project. I really appreciate that. But still, I, I still have concerns because, you know, you know, say they come in and then they leave, somebody else comes in. They may not be as, amenable to the neighborhood. So, I ask that you take, take that seriously. You know, we've been through this before with other projects. I've been a longtime resident here. I know something has to go in on these properties. I just ask that we make something that's going to be a, a good fit, which is laid out in the zoning bylaws. You know, that any projects coming in, you know, should not be a detriment to the surrounding neighborhood and businesses. And that's what I ask you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
To clarify, the 24/7 is the emergency response for the municipalities, which we just chatted about. which we just chatted about. I do hear their concerns, I understand it. I do, I guess, feel for them. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to meet with the abutters and residents yearly if they want to schedule meetings to hear concerns or stuff that comes about that they want hashed out, or I can work on, or we can work on with tenants. I mean, I'm not here to build this and, and I'm out of here, I'm here long term. You know, building one, like we said, is phase one. Building two is, you know, a couple of years down the road, so I'm here. The intent is not to build and sell, and, you know, I hope we showed, I hope we showed you that, uh, that's what's going to happen, or the intent.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? All right, at this point, I think what we'll do is we'll close the public hearing, take a motion to move to a vote, and that will include deliberations and discussion, and then we will actually vote.
I would, I would like to clarify my position in the open hearing.
Okay.
So that the applicant has an opportunity to respond if they want to. So I've come to the conclusion that I think that this project will, as I said, have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. I'm basing that, of course, on the special permit section of our bylaws. And I first want to say that when you look at the table, the zoning, the, the use table, that there are a lot of uses that are as right in industrial area. There are very few that are not, and contractor, outdoor contractor yard is one of those. Now, that went through town meeting, so that means the town has commissioned us to view contractor, outdoor contractor yards carefully because it's not as right. So it's something that we take seriously. And the particular part of the, of the special permit criteria is that shall be granted only upon its written documentation that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. And then one of the things, of the list of things that we are to consider, yes, there's traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, that's number two. But number four is neighborhood character and social structures. Neighborhood character is the one in particular that I'm focusing on. So this is based on the facts and figures that we were given, and in fact, there was a mistake in the original presentation where it was briefed to us, and I specifically asked, what is the daily truck total? And I was told that it's forty. And so then, when I asked, what is the application going to provide? And they said, and the answer was twenty. And so I made the comment of, oh, it's a fifty percent increase. So that was a confirmation that it was forty. But then, we've had several traffic back and forth between traffic engineer and our peer review, and in no case did anyone correct that that was the average daily truck trips until we got our third peer review letter from Mr. Dirk, in which he commented that the, the daily truck, average daily truck traffic is eighty. And so then, that's why I asked in the hearing, what is the average daily truck traffic? And then I was told it's eighty. So, understand, okay, now I understand, the number is eighty, that's the number given, and that the number that this is going to add is twenty. And that also additionally, with eighty, that is, if I recall, two point eight percent of the, of, have truck traffic to total traffic, and that this project then would make that three point five percent. And then Mr. Dirk also mentioned, in traffic exclusion studies, that they typically look at impacts between five and eight percent, heavy truck, heavy truck traffic to total traffic. So we are, we are in that general range, but in particular, what I want, what I, I had, when I heard that there was going to be that addition of truck traffic, we had heard from neighbors, and by the way, I do want to clarify, that this is not a, I, I don't consider this a mixed zone. Where the project is, is, I think, relatively mixed zone because it's IA and residential. But then, the impacts of this project are not just felt by what's happening on that site, but it's also felt by what that site contributes in terms of traffic on the road, which for, as was, as Anita mentioned earlier, there's quite a length of River Neck Road that is residential only and public property. So there, so the significant portion that we're discussing is residential, it is not IA. And so therefore, it's very reasonable for us, as we consider this particular proposed use for this particular site, that there are these unique characteristics where the impacts of the site are going to be felt on the neighborhoods that are not in IA and are not abutting IA, because they're all along River Neck Road. But in particular, I want to cite that I queried, no, we heard first, I want to say, that we heard that currently neighbors are experiencing, that they are, let me use the words of, of Mr. Dirk, when I asked him particularly, because he made this comment about the impacts of, of truck traffic, and I asked him what he means by what constitutes more noticeable, and in his response, he said that even if there is a small number of additional tractor trailers, you will notice that more, just given the size of those vehicles and how imposing they are in relation to if you had ten passenger cars going by, et cetera. So Mr. Dirk acknowledges, our peer review acknowledges, that there is this, this possibility or this likelihood of that it's going to be noticeable. And so then the question becomes, well, how notice, when in it's being noticeable, does it become adverse effect on the neighborhoods through which these trucks are going? And does that outweigh the benefits of the project, the benefits that the project provides? And my feeling at the time was that even with twenty or even at eighty, given that the neighbors have already cited that they are noticing the effects of heavy vehicles on River Neck Road, that adding that many vehicles per the ITE was going to have, make it not just noticeable to them, but actually bring it to a point where it affects their sense of their neighborhood. In other words, it's not hard to imagine that if you live in a neighborhood where you have a certain amount of traffic going by, you get used to it, and you accept that as part of your neighborhood. But then if that changes, and you, you're, particularly if you have either a lot more trucks, or in the case of where I live, if you just have a whole lot more cars, that's going to affect the quality of that neighborhood. And we actually heard that from the River Neck Road residents with respect to the warehouse that was proposed, more than one person said, if this project goes in, I'm moving. And so these are real impacts that just aren't quantified. Now, that's why I specifically explored this idea with Mr. Dirk. In particular, what I, what I asked him was, well, actually, I phrase it in a, in a form of a negative, I said, you don't actually determine adverse effects on neighborhoods to you as part of your traffic, traffic study. And he said, the, the way he answered was, well, that considers on what you're looking at. But basically, he referred to the only thing that really, where it's involved in traffic engineering is when you're looking at truck exclusions. Now, we're not talking about truck exclusions here. That, to me, seems like a very extreme kind of thing to prevent truck traffic on a road. We're not talking about that. We're talking about whether the addition of these trucks on the road is going to make it perceptible to the neighbors, noticeable to a degree, that they feel that it's just not their neighborhood anymore. And so I was trying to probe with him, is there a metric? Is there something? For example, we, if we were to make a decision that we think the level of service is not going to be the level of service that you say it is, then I think it would be justifiable to say that we're being arbitrary, because, you know, you've given us a standard, a number by which a standard is accepted that's used to evaluate it. But there are no standards in our, we have standards in other parts of the bylaw with relation to act for protection. You know, if it's so much land disturbance, either in terms of square feet or percentage or that sort of thing. But in this case, there is no standard established for what constitutes adverse effect on a neighborhood. And so there's a certain amount of judgment that this board has to apply when it's considering that. But nonetheless, I wanted to explore, and I felt that that was the case, but I wanted to explore that with Mr. Dirk. And what he said was, basically, that what he described in terms of truck exclusions is the way the metric is really done as relates to traffic engineering. And he said that then when they evaluate in terms of impacts, they're really looking at safety of the roadway, et cetera, but it's not an exact science in terms of measuring it. And it's that point in particular I want to point out. It is not an exact science. That means that as a board member, I take the position that because there is no metric by which I can really evaluate this, and yet, my own sense and the discretion that I'm given by the town to make that conclusion, then really, I don't have to prove that that's the case, because there really is no exact science in terms of how it's measured. And so if you disagree with it, then you need to rebut that in terms of providing some way of identifying that in fact, it's not the case. And so I, I have the advantage of presumption in that sense, and I'm exercising it. There is no way that you can actually prove that it will not have an adverse effect. And I feel very strongly that given the numbers that we've been given, the increase that this proposed project will, will provide, the impact that I think it will have on the neighborhoods along River Neck Road, is going to have an adverse effect that outweighs the benefits. And that's why I would say no. So I wanted to say that before we closed, in case you wanted to rebut that in some way, I, that's why I'm, that's why I said I tried to, as soon as I knew that I had an issue with it, is why I raised it, if you recall, at the end of that meeting. And I waited at the next time to see, are you going to rebut that in some way? No, it wasn't rebutted. And so I want to give you every opportunity to respond to that before we go into deliberation.
I wish.
Get out of here.
Was that on one of your lists for the questions? On the, was that like in here, just more elaborate with what?
It's not, well, no. It's not a condition.
Okay, it's just your reasoning?
It's a, it's my reasoning.
Okay.
For why I would vote no, and that I wanted to do that before we closed the hearing so that if you wanted to say, no, you have the wrong numbers, or something like that, then you could do that.
I think, in rebuttal, just understanding my knowledge of the bylaw too, a contractor's yard, an indoor contractor's yard is allowed by right without a special permit, and that if we were to put essentially a building on the site, we would not require the special permit that you're using the criteria for. We would only be using the criteria under the APD for a lot coverage, and we would be a by right use. And so the established criteria would have to be the difference between a project that would be allowed by right versus a project that would be allowed by special permit, and how much more adverse the effect you think that that would be, considering that there are certain uses that are allowed here to create truck traffic on this road that that would not be a deciding factor for. So in thinking about that, understanding that this is an IA lot in an IA district, understanding that we are crossing through residential neighborhoods, the standard of care there is safety. Jeffrey Dirk responded with his letter, which essentially said, he believes that with the improvements that we've provided, that this is acceptable, which we've provided those. This is a public road within the town of Chumpsford. People are allowed to drive trucks on it. We've talked about the amount of truck traffic that this in particular, we've actually used a standard within our report that is actually more than Commonwealth Utilities currently provides for the amount of vehicles, considering the ITE requirement, which is over and above what they, which is what we found on Progress Ave, which is where they are today, understanding that they're looking to grow here. I think what we're providing you as far as an additional standard of care is understanding that Chris and his family is a local business. We started this process with meeting with the abutters, and we've met with this board at every juncture since the beginning of this. The site is five acres, it's in the IA district, it will be developed. You know that, you understand that, it will create tax dollars, it will create jobs within the town of Chumpsford. A contractor's yard is what we're finding within the town of Chumpsford, is something that people very much need. This is, this is, multiple people have reached out to me regarding contractor's yards. If we were to put a roof over this equipment, it would be allowed by right. But we're not, and I understand that. So the idea, as far as a standard of care to look at and a comparison you're looking at, is not that we are adding trucks to the road, but that we are adding trucks over and above what you think a by right use would allow to happen on this road that would be outside of this board's scope. So what we've provided.
Except for you cite an indoor contractor's yard, that's a different land use code.
It's a different land use code.
And it has a different number. But we are using outdoor contractors, we are using ITE numbers, and the reason is because that's an acceptable standard. We can all have ideas about whether we think it will be more, whether we think it will be less, so forth and so on, but you live by the sword, you die by the sword. If ITE favors you, I have to go along with it. If ITE favors me, you have to go along with it. We all have to agree that that's the standard, unless you have specific information that shows that it's otherwise, and you haven't done that.
Well, Commonwealth Utilities, if they were under a roof or not, would provide the same amount of traffic. They would have the same amount of vehicles.
That may be true. But again, we're using, we're not considering Commonwealth specifically in terms of the number of trucks that are going to be added to the road. The way that we do it, the way we all have agreed to do this, is to use the ITE numbers. So there may be specific cases where we have specific insights that would cause us to think one thing or another, and that's possible. But our decision, my decision, my, the information I've given you is based on the ITE established numbers.
Understood.
And the only way that that can be different is if you rebut the ITE numbers. And I don't think you have done that yet, and I don't think you're going to do that.
No, it would not be to rebut the ITE numbers, because this is looked at holistically as a special permit based on a certain number of criteria, and there are other aspects, we've already talked about the budget tonight.
But it only takes one of, if there's one that has an adverse effect.
No, it says overcoming. There's employment, there's keeping a business in the town of Chumpsford.
It's a balance, that's correct. It's a balance between adverse effect and positive benefit.
Talking about a few trucks a week, a few trucks a day going down River Neck Road, which is a public road that anyone can utilize.
That is not what we're talking about. We're talking about that I have.
I am going to start closing this.
That's fine.
All right, I, I just have one good comment. We are seeking a special permit, and so you do have to do this analysis as to whether or not we are going to have detrimental unbalance, whether we're going to have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. But what I hear is that you are considering this a residential neighborhood, and I don't think that is a correct metric. At best, you've got to say it's a mixed use neighborhood. It's an industrial zone. There are trucking companies, there's other businesses, they're all in the neighborhood. So while you can determine that we might be having some effect on the residential uses, that doesn't necessarily equate to the, the whole neighborhood. You need, need to look at the whole neighborhood. And more importantly, you say there's no metric for measuring detriment to character. Well, there are. Safety, visual impact, safety impacts, noise, there are all sorts of impacts that are measurable. You seem to say that people seeing more traffic, just seeing more trucks go by, or noticing more trucks.
Noticing.
Somehow is going to be so detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. Now, you're assuming that everyone is going to, that noticing a few extra trucks is going to be horrendous to them, and, you know, cause them to move or destroy the charact- be horrendous to them, and, you know, cause them to move, or destroy the character of the neighborhood. The truth is, we have had, I think, less than five people, neighbors, come and complain about this project. If you think that's a true sample of the neighborhood, I can't agree with you. I can't agree with you. You know, we got a few people that, I don't want to see more trucks, and you think that that is so detrimental, that it outweighs all the benefits the project has provided? You have the right to make your decision, and I just want to make sure that you are analyzing that question on the right basis. You can't just look at residents. You gotta look at the industrial uses, and whether our extra traffic are gonna have an impact on their character.
It doesn't have to have an adverse effect on everybody for it to have a sufficient adverse effect on the neighborhood to consider it to be something to be denied.
Okay.
So if one person-
This needs to end soon.
Well, I, you know, I can't rebut something that, you know, there's obviously nothing to discuss. You've decided how to analyze this, and you're saying you can look just at the five residents that have come here and say that we're destroying the character of the entire neighborhood? That's your decision. That's your decision.
Well, Mr. Desane, you've been doing this a long time, and you know-
Yes.
-that having five residents out of a neighborhood is actually a pretty strong representation.
Okay.
You forget that we met with dozens of neighbors before we even came to this board.
Okay, I need to close this out. All right, so at this point, we're gonna close the public hearing, move to discussion, deliberation, and a vote. So I will take a motion.
I move that we close the public hearing on 191 through 195 Riverneck.
I second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
Deirdre, you cannot vote.
I can vote on whether to close the public hearing.
True.
It's unanimous.
Unanimous. All right, just as a reminder, Deirdre, you also cannot participate in the deliberations. So, at this point, we will deliberate, and I will take it around the board. I'll start with Mike. Any comments, comments before we close?
Well, my analysis of this is actually fairly closely in tune with the argument that we heard tonight, it's not the first time I've thought of it, that a, an enclosed contractor yard is by right, and an exterior contractor yard is by special permit. Why is that? Well, what is the difference between an interior and an exterior yard that we would want to look at and regulate? So I'm just, I'm just gonna look at the differences. The differences, as I see it, are primarily visual ones. I mean, contractor yards are ugly, they can be a bit smelly, you know, they're, I know what they look like, we've all seen them. Well, in this particular case, the contractor yard portion of the project has been stuffed quite far back, I think, in a reasonable, a fairly reasonable effort to get it away from the public eye, get it away from the public nose, and, and get it away, get the noise associated, not with the traffic in and out, but with the operation of that yard itself. Get that away from the public. And I think the layout of this property basically does this pretty well. It puts it in the back. If it was reversed, and you wanted to put the trades guys in the back and the contractor yard in the front, I would very much object on, to granting the special permit. However, the way it stands, I see, there may be differences in the traffic numbers, and you made a very good point there, but I don't imagine that they are so different between a closed yard and an open yard, in terms of the trucks actually leaving the premises and returning to the premises. I can't imagine that they are so, the difference there is so big as to make a material difference in, in deciding between one or the other. For that reason, I'm inclined to vote for it. I'm not wildly happy with it, but it is an industrial area. The town, it is the will of the people of the town of Chumsford that industrial activities be placed in something like this, because they have called it an IA. Now, they did this back in 1960-something, maybe it wasn't the wisest move, maybe they just didn't look forward enough, I don't know. But with the rules that we have right now, that is the will of the people of Chumsford. So I will, with some reluctance, vote for this.
Okay. Joel, do you have anything else?
First of all, there aren't any specific criteria or direction that causes us to exclude certain things to consider in an outdoor contractor yard. So, and I fully respect Mike's opinion. And again, what I was laying out was not necessarily that the board must say yes, but that the board has the discretion to be able to say no, and why. And I don't know what the numbers are difference between them, so it's purely conjecture on both of our parts, but I would tend to think that you would tend to have, and ITE bases this on, you know, basically how they're able to extract features out of the data in such a way that they can differentiate, you know, groups of data in a statistically significant way, to be able to say. And I think that by and large, you do not have outdoor contractor yards that are under large, in large buildings, like a hangar or something like that. But nonetheless, I, to me, that's, that's not, that's a moot point. The fact is, the numbers that we do have, I think, are what could, I think, likely, I think will, have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood in terms of their sense of their neighborhood, which is what I'm basing this on. I think too, that just in general, you know, that, that we, in considering the kinds of decisions that we make on these things, I think we do look at, not, we do look at the overall impacts. And in this particular case, I think that when they made the northern portion of Riverneck Road IA, I think they made a mistake, because the access is through residential. And we have, by the way, also, in IA, special permit for the planning board, when somebody wants to use their property as an access to IA. So there is even encoded in our bylaw, this consideration that there are gonna be impacts when you do that, and it needs to get attention. So I think consideration of these kinds of vehicles that are going through areas that are residential is something that's valid and reasonable for us to consider. And so for that basis, I just want to reiterate that, that if you recall in Hildreth, the argument that I made there was that we didn't have any definite definitive way that was standard, established way to assess safety, so that we then said, okay, well, in our best judgment, that we think because of the increases that were going on there, that it was gonna cause a safety issue. In this case, I'm not talking about safety issue, but it's a similar argument. There isn't, there isn't a metric by which we say this will or this will not have, and that then gives us discretion. And so then therefore, I'm exercising that discretion and saying no.
Okay, thanks. John?
After studying the special permit criteria, my determination is that the adverse effects of locating an outdoor contractor yard at this site will outweigh the beneficial impacts. And so therefore, I'm inclined to vote no.
Okay. Anita?
Well, I think Joel summarized the neighborhood impact in the, so I'm not gonna go there. One thing though, I do want to bring up is the, is number six, the financial impact. And while, and I want to bring up the example of 270 Bilwica Road. Like I said, we had a tri-board meeting this past Monday, and Paul Cohen, we're at a, you know, shortfall for level service budget, and one of the, you know, one of the things he brought up was 270 Bilwica Road. While we got a new permit for it, because, and that, just to bracket, this is the new warehouse, that distribution center that's going up on Bilwica Road. While we got permitting funds, great, we took down a office building that is taxed at a higher rate than a warehouse. So we got a one-time bang, and now we have to make that up. We don't have those funds. And guess what? Like, we can't, you know, we're looking, we're meeting in a month to try to figure out, what do we do? And there's a lot of things on the table. So when we look at this, and they say, and they get up there and tell us, look at the, you know, all the extra jobs, well, no, there aren't any extra jobs, because they're already in Chumsford. So, okay, so that's an impact. Yes, we get a one-time permitting fee. I, you know, I like the building that they put up front, you know, yes, guys, like, you know, wanna build, take down an empty lot and maybe build something like that. I liked how they did the landscaping in front, sure. What I don't think, but when you look at the impact of a contractor yard and all the negative effects, the property values, or the impact of those home property values, where our town, most of our tax income, dirty of it, comes from residential property taxes, are gonna have a detrimental effect. And you can't just look at it at that one piece of property, and you can't look at it one time. There's an opportunity cost, there's a cost that those properties, you know, the next person, when they go to put them up for sale, is not gonna wanna spend, those are not gonna appreciate in a manner that's gonna keep up with the town to cover our expenses. So I don't think the, I don't think there's a compelling argument from a financial, ooh, you know, this is gonna give us a lot more money, let's do it. And on top of the negative impact to the town, to the neighborhood, you know, I just don't see the windfall in cash. I think it's, we have to be really careful when we look at these and we hear, oh, permitting fee, great, new building, great. Well, what does it do to the rest?
Okay.
So I'm a no.
Thanks. Marcy?
So I'm looking over all the documents and listening to all these, I think Joel hit right on the head there with the, you know, impact, and we listen to the traffic study and things that are going on with that. To what's this gonna provide to the neighborhood? Yes, I understand that this is gonna go in an IA area, but this is a, this has been pointed out many times, this is a mixed-use area, and we have to look at both, that is IA, it is residential, and it's not going to be of much benefit for the residential area, it is going to create problems and havoc, and right now, I'm a no.
Okay. Sarita?
I understand and hear what, like Joel and everyone is saying, but I also have been hearing and listening to the property owners and all the stuff that they're willing to do accommodate, and it makes me think about other people that are going into this area. I like the idea of the safety features they're willing to add, because if they don't do it, who's gonna do it? The fact that they even are saying that they're willing to talk with the abutters, I mean, they put up a good picture, but in reality, we did look at those other areas, and they do look different, so there is concern with it looking that way. So I'm, I'm back and forth, because I understand what Joel's saying, I understand what Anita's saying, I understand what everyone's saying, and I, I live close to a road where there's trucks, and I feel the trucks when they go by. So increased truck traffic, people's houses will shake, they will move, and it's not a good feeling to have that. But at the same time, the amount of traffic that they say is going through, it sounds like more, but regardless of what business goes there, there'll still be traffic. So I'm leaning more towards, I'm borderline, more towards a yes than a no, but I'm feeling the no, so.
Okay. From my perspective, I think this is an interesting project. It's, to me, it's a tale of two, two different projects. I really like the front half of this project. I think that that does provide value to Riverneck. And I disagree with you, Mike, that the aesthetics is the only difference between an indoor and outdoor contractor yard. I think this project shows you the, the actual different impacts. With the outdoor contractor's yard, you have heavier machinery, you have heavier trailers carrying that machinery to different sites. Looking at the types of trucks in that back site, not only do you have the front loaders and those types of machinery, but you also have those flatbed trailers that have to take the, the equipment to and from the site. Those don't stay on the site, those come back to the property. And so those are the types of heavy trucks that we're gonna see on a regular basis on Riverneck. We're not gonna see, we're probably never, ever, rarely gonna see the front-end loaders themselves. We're gonna see those big trailers that carry the front loaders from site to site. So I think that part of the reason, and I agree with Joel, part of the reason why that outdoor contractor yard is a special permit is because of those heavier impacts than what we would see in an indoor contractor's yard, which is what we had discussed in that first condition, definite different impacts. I also go back to the crash data. The one thing that stuck in my mind is the crash data that showed a lot of the failure to remain in lanes. What I didn't see in that crash data is which way they went off the road. Did they go off the road on the same side, or did they cross the center line and go off the road in the other direction? I really wish I would have seen which way, because the applicant assumed it was the same side. I'm not sure that that's the case. And when you add double the number of heavy trailers, like we will see, I'm concerned that that's, those types of crashes are gonna increase, because you're gonna see people trying to get off the road to avoid those large trucks. So I think, to me, if this were a project that proposed that front half, I'd be all in favor of it, because I do think that's what would bring the jobs in. The back half is where we, I think, see the heaviest impacts to the surrounding communities. And the access to that property, even though that property is in IA, is completely through residential. And it's unfortunate, because I, I want to, I want to do a good turn for the businesses in this community. But with these outdoor contractor's yards, we keep seeing a location, location, location issue that keeps putting them right next to the residential areas, and I wish we had a better alternative. But I, I think I'm gonna be a no on this one. So.
So we have to take a vote?
Yeah.
I think we might as well.
Yep.
You're gonna need a motion.
Yes, I will accept a motion.
Then I will move to grant the special permits for 191 through 195 Riverneck Road, with conditions as described.
I will second it, so we can get the vote.
Yep. A motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor of granting the special permit?
Aye.
Mike and Sarita, all in favor? Mike and Sarita, all in favor, all opposed to granting the special permit?
Aye.
Marcy, Anita, John, Joel, and myself. So special permit is denied.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Do you guys want to convene with your client?
Yeah, we'll do 133.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 133 Princeton Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, Douglas DeShane from Finnerland and Nicholson, uh, representing the applicant. Uh, you recall in the last meeting, we, um, we had a pretty thorough discussion regarding the, uh, changes that were made in the construction of the building and, and why and how things came about. And then the board gave us a considerable amount of information with respect to your feelings on those changes. And I think, um, we especially focused on the fact that, uh, we had removed a number of windows and we had modified the front facade of the building to a point where the board, um, felt that we were, you know, beyond the scope of what, um, what they wanted to see in, in originally approving this. So we went back, we left the meeting with your concerns and your thoughts. So we went back to, um, have the, the, the building, uh, design modified to again try and address your concerns. So what we'd like to do right now is I'd like to have our architect essentially just go through with you, these renderings which are reflective of the changes that we, we made, new changes we're proposing to make to, to get the board comfortable with the design, and also just point out that the things that we've done to make this building attractive. So with that, Jim, Mr.?
Okay, there you go. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Jozokas, Jozokas Architecture Incorporated. Just keep it brief and short. Based on the board's comments from the last hearing, uh, we're proposing a few modifications. These renderings are depicting those changes and, uh, quickly point them out with the speaker. Unfortunately, they're kind of dark in the renderings, but you get the concept. We added a couple more windows here, um, and on the other side over here. And we also incorporated the landscape that was always intended to be just that. So, uh, any questions? I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
So that's the front. Added the windows in the front.
Yes, before that was, and, uh, here as well, so.
So they've got more windows in the front?
Yep, balanced that all better. Couple over here.
And then where's the side from Princeton Station? That's the other side. The Princeton?
The bottom left.
Bottom left.
Okay. And that's the back. Okay.
Yeah.
Which one's the back?
That one, right bottom right.
And those are real windows? Because I remember you guys were talking about fake. Are these real?
These are real windows in the front?
They'll be full windows because of what's behind them is stuff you don't want to see. Uh, the stairs, crossbracing, so they'll be full windows.
What's the texture? What's the, what do they look like? Are they?
They will look like the other windows.
So there would be like a?
There'll be windows, but full windows.
Okay.
But they just look dark? I don't know what those?
I just find that a store doesn't have windows in the front.
What, um, say Cumbly Farms or whatever, they build those ranch-style structures and they have those little windows up top and they just basically block them out.
Would it, would it be like a reflective glass type?
Um, there's a variety of different ways of doing it. Typically, um, the glass itself becomes reflective. Sometimes they'll cut over a hole, put a little light in it, but sometimes, most often, they're just painted flat-black.
Okay.
So then this, these pictures aren't really accurate then for that?
No.
Because they look like they're clear windows.
Actually, it looks like the building's see-through.
Yeah. Just trying to understand what it looks like.
Yeah, they'll be glass.
Yeah, no, I think what Jim's saying is it's a glass window. It just won't have anything behind it. So when the sun reflects off of it, it'll reflect like any window. But there's not going to be like somebody inside with a light on that you can like see through it into anything. You never will, obviously, but it is still glass and looks like a window.
So it'd be like a glass with a shade drawn on the inside. Okay, okay.
That makes a little more sense.
Guys, if I could just, um, add too, I mean, one of the big concerns that I heard was that, you know, at least what we had built here just didn't reflect the look that you had originally approved. And so, again, we, we restored the windows. I, I think, you know, uh, from the front view, I, we're pretty close to what it was before. But we've also, as you know, done some improvements with this corner. You know, with this, the moldings, the way the sign is presented. Now it would be presented above all the windows consistent, so that this whole corner is as windowed as it was originally. We did replace windows here that we had taken out and there is a window here. We have not proposed to put windows back in here only because, as I understand it, you really can only see that, right? When you're driving down the road, you, you can see this, but you really can't see that there aren't windows there. And, you know, we've got a car dealership right here, which is the same on the other side. We, we hadn't proposed as many windows because, facing Princeton, because there's a pretty good vegetated buffer there.
You cut it all down.
Yeah, I was there the other day. There's, all the trees are gone.
Well, we've got to put the landscaping back in.
Those were big, old.
Yeah.
So actually, that was one of the questions I had. Did you guys, did your clients cut down all those pine trees along between Princeton? Or was that Princeton Station that cut those?
Bob France with MTL Construction, those trees were on Princeton's, uh, property and they were the ones that cut them down.
They did. Okay, okay.
Which ones were those outside of that left? Where were they?
Our property line is?
Here's Princeton.
No, no, no. It's down here. See this tree line here?
Yep.
This is where the trees were. It's off the property.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that it wasn't you guys that did that.
I, I guess the point is they don't seem too concerned about seeing our building.
I guess not, and that's why I wanted to ask that question today.
Whereas we know that the gentleman on the other side had some concerns.
Yeah.
So we did replace the windows there, we fixed that corner, made it, put the awnings, you know, just to make it all look more attractive. And, uh, I think we've achieved that. And again, all, I, I, all I can say is I'm sorry that we found ourselves in this situation. But I do think we, we've tried, I think, if you take a look at this building, as it's now proposed, in my opinion, I like it a little better than the original building, but we've certainly replaced the glass in the front of the building, so.
I, I like the front and the glass. My concern now is with that third story in the back.
Right.
The renderings that you had shown last time. So to me, this looks like a, an elevator shaft of a warehouse. The renderings that I saw the last time that I had asked about.
It would be on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Which one is it?
Previous documents, first architectural plans, I think. Uh, third one from, yeah. Yep. That is what I was more expecting. So if you notice that third floor, it's set down a little bit. It's more of a homey porch style. It looks like it's a gathering space. Bottom left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that is the rear elevation.
Yeah. And if you look at the top right one, it's a lot lower than the elevator shaft. In the new renderings, that third floor is raised up to the height of the elevator shaft.
You mean the, the sign that says wine on the?
No, the sip. They want to have the wine tasting. That wasn't on the original plans.
Right.
You're talking here. It's the low?
Yeah.
Where before it was kind of cut down.
So it adds a full third story to the building as opposed to three-quarter or half-story. And as I took a drive-by yesterday, that third floor is visible from both directions over the other buildings. As you're coming from the bridge near the establishment, and if you're coming from the other direction, it's visible over Princeton Station.
Yeah, and that wasn't, that wasn't in the original plan. This is all new. Yeah, I saw that.
So I am not happy with how that one looks.
And just, just so you guys know, I've received multiple calls on this property, multiple, multiple calls.
Saying what?
One of them actually said it's marginally better than what was there before.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes. I'm just.
I can, uh, my name's Bob France. I'm with MTL Construction. I can speak to your comment regarding the chimney.
Yeah.
First of all, this is not a full third floor, as you know. It's just a small, um, uh, area for, uh, number one, for the elevator and number two for stair, uh, rooftop access, uh, which is required by code. We have a stairwell coming up to the roof and that's part of, uh, where's the other? There's the old one. Can you show me the old elevation? What am I looking for?
The third one down, architectural plans.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in fact, this is what's there now. So it's not at the elevation of the chimney. And the, uh, again, the purpose of this is for the elevator access egress and for the stair rooftop access. And, uh, if you look here, you can see that the, um, elevator shaft is higher than the structure is proposed.
So, so we had asked for these designs to be the final proposal. So are you saying that this one is the final proposal and not the final one that we're seeing tonight?
Go back to that.
So hold on a second.
Somebody's doing magic.
Rendering.
So, in answer to your question, uh...
You had the right one.
You had the right one.
No, no, just hold on a second.
Show the both on the same screen.
Look at them go.
Window, window, is that? Oh.
Yeah, just turn a window to window and then, yeah.
No, 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 but if you do, you do the, do this, window and tab right, it'll give you the option to put both on the same screen. There you go.
Hey, look at that.
Wait, how do you?
Okay, now just click on the other one. Yep.
I waited, went away. You may have to come over here.
Go ahead, you got it. Close that.
Just jump over here.
Now click on the other one.
Okay, well, this, that'll work.
That'll work.
That'll work, okay. So you see, uh, in this rendering, you're correct, does not reflect this. In fact, here's the, um, elevator shaft. Hard to see from here.
Yeah, you got to go back to the other one.
Yeah, go back to the other one. So you can see the elevator shaft is, it's, you know, kind of hard to see, but it's a darker color.
Yeah, the darker color. Yep.
Right. And you're correct, we will not, it's not the intention to be that height of the elevator. In fact, it's going to be lower. That was the intent of it.
Are there actual prints for this?
Penthouse area.
I don't know.
No.
No. Could we get correct prints then for all of this?
Did your building permit, uh, reflect what you're describing? Uh, it does not. It reflects this. But, um, you know, I, we had resubmitted to propose a revised plan to satisfy the requirements.
So revised plan includes the bottom right one or the upper?
It's more like, it's this. Yeah, it's more like this.
Can we get one that's the right, what you're going to build?
Sure. Why isn't that plan reflective of that? I, I guess I'm confused myself. You guys are all saying that you, you were better satisfied with the elevator shaft in this building when they were smaller and different heights. Is that correct?
Yes.
And yet now you're seeing a picture here that makes it look like that, that building is now raised up to the height of the?
Yeah, so that, in the, in the newest, in the newest renderings, it looks like a box. It looks like an elevator shaft. It looks hideous.
Whereas when it was this, when it was this, that was acceptable.
It looks like a porch. It looks like a nice meeting space.
You, you've got to answer the question for me. Is this what we propose this to look like when it's done or is it going to look like that?
Great question.
So I'm sorry.
So at this point, it's getting late.
We're going to?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, just a real quick question in case they have to do something. Did they do any change to the lighting? And if they did, is there a new lighting graph to show what's lit, what's not lit, with the plus-minuses?
I don't know. No changes to the lighting? Okay. Before we go, I also noticed that there was a new monument sign being added and one less tree. It looked like there was a tree being proposed in that spot.
So.
Okay. It looked like it was.
Well, we'll make sure they're both there. Oh, Joyce, for asking to continue, please.
Yes.
Motion to continue?
Yes.
I move to continue, uh, 133 Princeton until?
December 10th. And I would like this to be the last continuation.
I bet we're not the only ones.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Oh, yes. We need public input. Sorry. Sorry.
Sorry.
All right, I withdraw my motion.
Withdrawn. Right. Public input. Sorry, my apologies.
Okay, here I am back again. First, I want to apologize. I've been trying to keep up with all this, but when I watch it on TV, sometimes I not know when it's coming on or when people step away from the microphone, I lose what they're saying. So I apologize for asking questions that you've already answered. And I'm here tonight to represent the natives of North Chelmsford because we are very upset about this. So when we heard the natives in North Chelmsford that a liquor store was going in, we thought, okay, it's going to be normal size. And we thought, another one? I mean, we have one at Drum Hill, now this one, one in the square, and one in Tinsbury Row. That's four in row. So we were kind of, you know, surprised about that. Okay. So I'm 99% sure, I, now you could correct me on this, when they come, my voice is like shaking here. When they come to get the permit, they don't come to you guys first, right? Because they do.
They do.
Well, I'm 99% sure. I was watching that meeting and they didn't have their plans that night. They said they'd drop them off at the town hall in the morning. So that put like a red flag in my brain and I've been watching this. So then I heard there was a cease and desist and then I saw they were still working on it, so I thought that was all done. And then I caught it that it's still going on on TV, so here I am. And then I caught that it's still going on on TV, so here I am. So I always felt like you have to have something to give it up. And all I keep hearing is that there was supposed to be a basement and a first floor to this. So I'm sorry, but like the last meeting, there was a lot of, oops, we're sorry, oops, we're sorry. I don't know how, this isn't their first time at the rodeo here. My grandson is 11 years old. He knew that you couldn't build down there a basement. So I was kind of like insulted about that whole fact that they had to come to the meeting and say, oh, we've given up the basement, we've given up the basement. To me, they never had the basement to give up. So now you take that building that was supposed to be the basement and the first floor, so you raise it up. And it's humongous. And the elevator should have gone from the first floor down. Why is it sticking up onto the third floor? I'm also sure that I heard at one of these meetings, I think it might have been you, Chris, that asked the question, what is going on on the third floor? And I thought, I heard 29 people were going to be allowed to go up there and have their little drinks. Am I wrong about that? I thought I heard that. Okay, so why isn't that being discussed? So I always thought a liquor store is, you go in, buy your beer, and you leave. Were they going to buy their beer and go up there, or they're going to sell beer or wine or whatever up there on the third floor?
It's, it's for tastings. A lot of liquor stores and wine stores do tastings for clients.
So it's like a little party thing up there? Do they have chairs and?
No. No. It'll be, it's also not in our purview. That would be more of the Board of Select Board in terms of the usage of that space, but we would be doing just the design.
So I don't understand the tasting thing. They can go up to the third floor and taste their products? Is that what that means?
Yep.
Yeah, it, it's like Sam's Club samples, like grocery store, almost.
It's a lot of money for tastings on the roof, but.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Anyway.
No judgment. Go ahead.
So.
I get what she's saying.
So that's why the elevator shaft is so high? So they can go out and do their tastings? I don't, that seems a little sneaky to me. So the second floor is all for storage, right? So I would assume that the walk-in coolers and such are going to be on the first floor? What's going to be on the second floor? Just like beer cakes and boxes of wine? So would that be like a tasting and let's, let's tap these beer cakes like Budweiser brewery type thing? So this whole second floor is just for boxes and storage?
They're telling us.
Have enough of beer to fix the state? Do they have to, did they have a tie-in for the sewer for this, or was that what they were doing out front? Oh, they had a tie-in already, so they don't have to put a sewer?
It, it's connected to the sewer.
So what was going on on the front when they were digging that big hole out there while they do it in there?
Yeah, infiltration, stormwater.
Oh, okay. So will they be fixing, you guys be fixing the road better? Because it's quite a dip there when you dug up out to Princeton Street?
We'll, we'll keep track of the concerns.
Okay. This is all my, my neighbors and stuff that were. Yeah, one of my questions was the trees to the border there, but since you said Princeton, I'm surprised Kevin wanted to do that down there, but. And you also brought up, that was another one of my comments, that, you know, you can see this from both sides, please. I'm a North Chelmsford girl, you know, we're watching this. And, you know, it's just, I guess most of my comments from my friends and relatives are, oh, my God, this thing's so huge. What are they doing down there? I, it's bigger than the state liquor store for crying out loud. Can they come in later and put, like, some, come in for permit later for doing like something extra on the second floor?
They would have to.
They could, but they would have to come before this board and probably the select board for the liquor license.
Yeah, it would have, like, if you're talking like if it, if it has something to do with alcohol, then they would have to go in front of the, they would have to go to the state to get a different license. The license is only to sell.
Okay, I guess that's my questions now. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I'll take a motion to continue.
I move that we continue 133 Princeton Street to December 10th.
My second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, did we have to actually move to close the public hearing first?
No, we're continuing.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, 152 Stedman Street.
I can really say good evening right now.
It's almost morning.
Good evening, Board, Board members. My name is Bruce Haskell with Langley Environmental. I'm the engineer for the redevelopment of a solar PV facility at the old Glenview landfill, Cap Glenview landfill at 152 Stedman Street. I'm joined by.
Excuse me for a minute. Excuse me, folks. Thank you.
I'm joined by Anthony Shaw, who is the, with Progeneration Energy, who is developer, who is available, who is listening in on Zoom. I just wanted to give you just a two-minute overview of the project. If you remember, we were here in August, and we're talking about the Cap Glenview landfill, which is on the Chelmsford Lowell Line in North Chelmsford. And we're talking about a project that will put solar panels on the top plateau with battery storage, and then recap or reconfigure the side slopes on the south and east side to allow for a new capping material to be put down and a cap to be put down into that, into that area there. At the last, at the, when the hearing was opened, we heard some comments from the Fire Department and the Tax Collector about the project, and the, we have, sorry, should I, should I wait a minute or?
No, keep going.
Okay. Up there, so. And, you know, and I think the, we've addressed some of those comments. The town also retained Weston Sampson to do a technical review for both this board and the Conservation Commission. Sorry. And sorry, this distracted me for a second here. And to look at the stormwater design as well as the site plan and general landfill capping considerations out there. We've addressed the Fire Department comments and submitted a document to them. Essentially, their two comments that are just not acknowledged are to upgrade the access road for their ladder truck. We provided a turning area on top of the landfill plateau where the truck could get up there and turn based on the type of truck that it is. We also upgraded the access road to the top of the landfill to show that, how to get to the top and to widen it so that the truck can get up there safely and get back down the road safely out there. We also thickened the thickness of the road based on potential for damage to the underlying final cap that's out there. It's a couple sheets down from that, if you continue down. Yeah, so just, just to orient everybody. Just to orient everybody here, we're three runs in here, Lowell landfill, Chelmsford Lowell Line out there. These are various office condos that are in Chelmsford. Stedman Street is actually a little bit off this plan over in this direction here. The entrance to the site is actually through the old Lowell landfill entrance. Okay, so I may have mentioned last time. This was part of the old pre-City of Lowell landfill site out there. That's how it became to be a landfill. So essentially, the battery storage is here. We developed a turning area here for that the truck can get up and turn and get back down the road. As you can see, maybe it's, we've also widened the road in that area to allow for the truck to get up and safely up there to the standards that are the fire protection standards out there. We submitted that information both to the town's consultant, Weston Sampson, and to the Fire Department for review and comment out there. I think Weston Sampson has actually responded that it appears to be adequate. There's another sheet that actually shows the standard turning radiuses and the like for that, you know, to demonstrate that, what goes on there and things. The other request that the Fire Chief had made was to have a, demonstrate a, do a hydrant test. Because of the, with the entrance being in Lowell, the hydrant that we're going to actually test is going to be in the City of Lowell, and we're trying to schedule that. There's quite a lot of discussion back and forth about what was the best hydrant to hook off of and do that. And we hired a consultant who's an expert in those things, and has been communicating both with the Fire Chief and the Fire Department in Chelmsford and the Water Department in Lowell to get access to that. So that's in process. I would anticipate that will happen in the next week or so. We'd be able to report back the results of that to the, to the board. Weston Sampson has two sets of comments that they've provided, and I think Nick Ames from Weston Sampson is here, and he can provide any more insight there. The first was a general site plan, and there's been a couple of back and forths on that. There's two remaining comments that I read from reading the response that I received earlier this week. One is about the grain size of the gravel and how big the stones are out there, that we could certainly accommodate that and agree to that. And the other one is dealing with some erosion potentially where that new cap interfaces with the old cap that's out there. That one I really need to go out and take a good look at. I think the design works, but I want to provide some additional justification or, or if necessary, clarifications as to what is going to be done there. The stormwater review with the Conservation Commission, for the Conservation Commission. I think our, our proposal as originally presented is generally complying with the stormwater handbooks. There was a couple of questions there in the town of Chelmsford's bylaw. We did submit some revised plans with some revised details that were there, and then we're awaiting a response to our response, sort of a confirmation whether we, we hit all the buttons or not. We have presented this project informally, I'm going to call it, to the Conservation Commission out there. They did not, they opened the public hearing some time ago, and we came in two weeks ago or so, presented the, well, maybe a week or two ago, presented the project, but the, the proof of mailing had not gone out in, quite in time, so it was more of an informal presentation. We haven't gotten all their comments back out there. There was one other comment that we had related to the project, which was a view from the residence, it's on the residence of, at Stedman on 140 Stedman Street in the back. And I don't know if, Evan, if you could pull up that cross-section that we did out there?
What, what attachment? One of your PDFs?
One of the PDFs there.
That was giving me all kinds of problems earlier.
Okay, well, essentially, we did a PDF, a cross-section from the residence to the landfill, and her question was essentially, are you going to cut down all the trees? We're not. They're all in the wetlands and the brook that goes through that area, so we're not going to cut down the trees, but it sort of graphically shows that out there. She can see that from the back, the condos, there's a back set of townhouses there. From that back set, you can see the landfill out there, and she will see some of this, the new capping area. But again, it's, she's not going to see, we're not going to be taking down any trees or any buffer that she currently has. Probably this time of year, she could see it fairly well. So, you know, with that, we're still, you know, working through the final details here. You know, we'd like to try to move forward with this at your, probably at your next meeting, after speaking to Evan briefly, and, you know, to make sure we have all the responses, and frankly, see if the, if the board has any other questions or comments that they want to see addressed that I might have missed or anything new.
Evan, I'm assuming by then we'll have a clean letter from the Fire Department?
We should, yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll send this, once we get confirmation from project engineer that the final plans are submitted, we'll submit, we'll send those back out for distribution.
Okay.
As Bruce mentioned, your peer review consultant, Nicholas Ames, is here. I think you've sat here for, you want to come up to the, sure. Maybe do a, a high, high-level summary of your review to date? Or maybe highlight the outstanding items?
Sure thing. I appreciate you guys having me. Nick Ames, I'm a civil engineer with Weston and Sampson. So our peer review for this project was really in regard to general engineering practices and construction methods for installation of solar arrays on landfills. We do them all throughout New England. We have prepared to date three different memorandum, or letters with our peer review comments. The initial one was dated October 10th, had 26 technical comments. The applicant has since sent us two separate rounds of responses. So we've provided two additional letters on October 21st, and then again this past Monday on November 10th. And our letters are formatted to have the previous comments with our responses per each date. So to date, the applicant has really satisfied 25 out of the 26 comments that we had. Comment number one in our memo, as Bruce had mentioned, we just had a recommendation regarding the stone size for the gravel subbase below the battery storage pad. The reason we're recommending a smaller stone size is just because of the potential contact with the flexible membrane liner. That's the impermeable layer for the landfill cap. The larger stone sizes could be more abrasive or potentially puncture that liner. So the smaller 3/8 inch or less is really a DEP recommendation in their landfill technical guidance manual. So that was just a recommendation on our end. And then the only, only really outstanding comment that we had was in regard to comment number 14. As Bruce had mentioned, it's a concern with erosion. So the way the existing landfill cap is constructed, it's about eight inches of topsoil that's grassed over a, a sand drainage layer over the impermeable, high-density polyethylene flexible membrane liner. So under existing conditions, stormwater will hit the topsoil layer. There's some amount of surface runoff, but for the most part, runoff will percolate through the topsoil layer into the sand drainage layer and then run laterally off the cap. The way this closure turf system is designed is that it has a geocomposite drainage layer that's essentially at the surface. There's the, the geocomposite and then a impermeable HDP liner directly below that. So there's really no amount of storage in that geocomposite layer. There's no soil. I mean, there's a small amount of sand infill. But this is why, I mean, the manufacturer generally recommends a curve number, runoff curve number of 95, which is almost similar to an impermeable surface. So my point is, with the closure turf system, most of the runoff flow is right at the surface. So when that closure turf system at the downslope interface with the existing soil cap, you're having a significant amount of flow discharging from the closure turf geocomposite drainage layer at the surface right onto the grass. So our concern is over time, there could potentially be erosion issues at that interface. Sounds like Bruce is going to be looking into that further. Ultimately, we're just looking for some sort of justification for how erosion will be avoided at that interface, or perhaps some sort of tweak to the design to make sure there's not going to be any long-term, you know, maintenance headaches for the town, especially if the closure turf system is going to remain in place after decommissioning of the solar array. Because ultimately, you guys are going to be the ones that have to upkeep that and maintain it.
That, that's not the case. This is a private landfill. This has nothing to do with the town.
Oh, really?
Yeah, this is, this is a private landfill. The town has never owned it, or they have no responsibilities.
Thank you. No, no, that's, that's important. That's an important clarification. Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. Regardless, it, it's still a concern with erosion on landfill cover systems, of course.
Somebody will have to do it.
It's a fair comment. I just didn't want to.
Yeah. Yeah, no, thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. So those were our outstanding comments. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you guys might have regarding our, our peer review letters to date.
So Nicholas has also done the stormwater peer review.
Yeah.
It was referenced that it was primarily for CONCOM. As you know, the planning board is also doing a stormwater review. Do you want to do a high level on that one?
Yeah, so in general, we found that the stormwater design was in compliance with all 10 all 10 of the mass DEP stormwater criteria. We had one comment asking about the assumed runoff curve number for the existing condition, to which the applicant in responded to us, they actually used the same runoff curve number that was used for the design of the landfill and the sizing of the existing basins. They also provided some justification as to why that number was used beyond that, but in our opinion, that's certainly a fair number to use. Many of the technical comments that we had in our peer review letter to the conservation commission were exact copies of the comments that we had in the letter to you guys, there were some overlap between the jurisdiction there regarding some of the potential for erosion. And then we just had some limited comments regarding the construction phase controls, which are really, I would say, more in CONCOM's purview. So in general, I think the application is technically sound. Our main concern right now is really that comment number 14 that we had in our letter to you guys.
One of the things that would help us for the next meeting is if you do, I noticed in a couple places, you had a couple of recommendations for potential conditions of approval. If there are any others that, that you have related to some of these reviews, if you could submit them to us before the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Just ask, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I just wanted to ask if the owner or the owner's attorney can contact the tax collector's office, because I have not had any contact from anyone, and there is a large balance outstanding, so I'd like to see that taken care of before we can, otherwise I'm going to ask the board to make it conditional.
Obviously, the owner is not the developer, pro generation at this, at this point, but we'll, we'll have some contact made with you to make sure, that, they are committing to pay the back taxes.
Okay, no, just because, otherwise I would ask the board to make any permits or approvals conditional upon that, because, you know.
And Anthony, except if I just say, that is, that is perfectly acceptable, acceptable condition here, given the amount of money, the back taxes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess I have one question, which is that I know there's been some incentives for solar and that a lot of them are expiring, is, are you going to be able to participate in any?
I can't say I'm just the engineer, but Anthony could probably answer that a little bit better out there, so.
Anthony?
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Of course I am. There's been quite a bit in the news regarding renewables in general. However, underneath all of the, you know, hullabaloo, so to speak, renewables are still very strong, and fortunately, in Massachusetts specifically, some of the programs that have been developed, like Mass Smart Program 3.0 was just released, very, very wise, very sound, very stable incentives that allow for projects like this, especially projects that use land with no other use. It makes those projects favorable and feasible.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Are the materials being used in the panels, anything that would be considered hazardous waste when they expire and then need to be disposed of?
No, they can all be disposed of, there's, there's different services.
Okay, so no lead cadmium or whatever?
Not at the, not at the level, there is low, low levels, but not at the levels that would create hazardous material.
Great, so they don't have to be specifically handled that way?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
My only question or comment, and I'm going to pitch it again, just because.
You talk into a microphone.
Yeah, my only question, or actually comment, is because I was at the meeting on Monday, and I'm a little concerned about the town's budget. Any, you know, if you want to reach out to the town and any contribution of electricity to offset some of our buildings, I think, love to entertain something like that, as a great, you know, business in our town, really want to maybe reach out to town manager or something, something we can do.
I think last time we did, we did commit to talking a little bit about, you know, purchase, purchase agreements and things like that, if that could benefit everybody.
Yeah.
The other thing I was thinking about, as you were talking about the gravel road, one thing that I'd like to see in the O and M for approval is the snow maintenance of that gravel road, and making sure that that path is cleared for any emergency vehicles on a regular basis.
Yes, it will be, yes.
Okay, but it'd be good to have it explicitly laid out in the O and M.
Sure.
All right, anything else? This is a public hearing, so any public still around who would like to comment?
No questions. Happy in their beds.
So I will entertain a motion.
Do you want to close the public hearing, or do you want to leave it open and just continue?
I think we need to leave it open and continue.
Okay, in that case, I move that we continue 153 Stedman Street until?
Well, I was going to ask a question.
152, isn't it? It's 152.
152, yes.
Are you guys going to be ready on the 10th, or do you?
I don't see any, and we're hopefully in the final, you know, runs of everything out there, yes.
December 10th.
I think it would be a pretty quick one on the 10th.
December 10th.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, motion by Mike, second by Deirdre, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Nothing left to have.
Last one, last public hearing, 10 Independence Drive.
Can you guys pass that tablet this way? We got another broken one over here. Just any of them, you're not using.
You guys have them all lined up over there, how many were needed?
Keep going black, like literally, I can't open any of the documents for the next one.
Are you sure it's not you? Should we be giving you another one? I'm not sure we should be.
Well, this one now also tells me the hour's 22:06, so, you know. Yeah, it is.
Hi, good evening.
No, not military time, yes.
All right, sorry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Adam Costa with the firm of Mead, Tallerman &amp; Costa, representing Ronnet Hospitality, the applicant, for a special permit for property at 10 Independence Drive. I think the good news is, it does not appear we have any opposition tonight. We were last before you three weeks ago, and we presented our application to convert the second floor and a portion of the first floor at 10 Independence Drive to 15 apartment units, a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom, but primarily two-bedroom apartments, and also to add a small takeout pizza restaurant as well. We reviewed with you that evening the site plan for the proposal, we also reviewed floor plans for the proposal, and as we concluded the first session of the public hearing, the board made, according to my notes, four requests of the applicant for additional information or updates between that meeting and tonight's meeting. We believe we have addressed those and made additional submittals, and I'm going to briefly speak to them, and then to the extent the board has specific questions about the site plan, Hushy Afshar, who is with Taj Engineering and is the project engineer, is in attendance tonight, he can get into the specifics as they relate to the site plan, and Ashook Patel, who is the principal with Ronnet Hospitality, is also in attendance, and he can address his communications with the superintendent of schools to the extent that you have questions about that topic. So let's touch upon that one first. There was some discussion that occurred three weeks ago about the location of the, the bus shelter for the school bus, sort of at that circular conclusion or cul-de-sac at the end of Alpine Lane. We did have communications with the superintendent of schools, Mr. Lang, and I have a quote here, we did submit a copy of the email correspondence we received. I didn't see it linked on your agenda, but we did provide it to, to your town planner, but I'm going to read, read you the excerpt from it. He indicated that he had reviewed the bus shelter location, he generally okayed the location, had no objection to it. He said the bus will come up Alpine Lane, will go around the circle, will pick up, drop off assigned students at the bus shelter location, and then will proceed out of Alpine Lane. Again, my client can speak more specifically to the particulars of that conversation. My understanding is that it was explained to him that at least one member of the board had some concern about children navigating the parking lot area, and I think that the feedback received was, well, that was appreciated, that's a challenge whenever bus stops are located within multifamily developments, whether it's a development of this sort that has housing in connection with hotel uses, but also much larger multifamily developments that may have many more cars coming and going, particularly at early morning and late afternoon hours, and so that was not a concern for the superintendent of schools, as I understand it. So we have made no changes to the bus shelter location, we're certainly happy to continue to discuss that with the board, but we would prefer, and I suspect the board would as well, that we would defer to the, to the recommendation or the approval of the superintendent of schools. Two other comments that were received relate directly to the site plan that you see on your screen. The first comment related to snow storage areas, you'll recall that we had designated for snow storage, really all of the green space on the site, around the entire perimeter of the site, those green areas that are adjacent to the parking spaces, some of them larger than others, including a sloped area sort of on the, in the southwest corner of the site, and the concern was that if we used all those areas for snow storage, particularly extensive snow storage, that that would cause damage to those areas, particularly if those areas were planted with anything more than grass, and quite frankly, even the grass. And so what we have done is we have removed the snow storage markings for many of those locations. It may well be that as the parking area is plowed, that there are small storage, limited storage of snow in those small areas, but the idea would be that we have continued to mark locations in sort of the center islands, the island that's sort of in the center-left side of the page there, you'll see it still says snow storage where the arrow is. There's also snow storage areas more toward the center of the page, again, in the island between there we go. And so those snow storage areas are still marked, but we've also designated on the easterly end of the site, if we sort of scroll over a bit, other way, if we sort of scroll toward the secondary entrance to this site over in the far end, there we go. A little further north, you can see that there's a notation there on the plan, and I can't quite read it from there, but I can read it on my copy. It says, "Snow storage areas, if full to max, will be removed off-site, and the area is approximately 15,500 square feet." So that's a sizable area for onsite snow storage, and as we had indicated at the last meeting, we would certainly commit to a condition of approval that in the event that the snow storage exceeds what's available onsite, that we would relocate it from the site. You had also requested that we provide a utility plan specifically to address certain comments that were made by the Department of Public Works. We had not provided a utility plan, we had represented to you a few weeks ago, that utilities are already in existence at the site, but that we would provide a utility plan showing those existing utility connections, and we have supplied that plan. It's difficult to see, because as is often the case with utility plans, the underground utilities are sort of marked in a fainter gray color, but they are all marked on this, on this plan, so that is a full standard utility plan. Again, Hushy Afshar can speak to that, but I understand it was quite challenging for him to complete it, because again, these are existing utilities, and we thought that we might easily find records on file with the town of those utilities and just simply place them on the plan, and instead he found himself onsite digging around and finding the utility connection so that he could mark them appropriately, but they are all now on the plan. And so the final item that had been requested, and again, this also speaks to existing conditions to a certain extent, was that we provide a full landscape plan. That took the longest, and I apologize, I know that you had asked us to make submittals to you the Thursday before your meeting, we made this submittal to you on Monday, and I made a further submittal this morning, but in any event, you can see it there on your screen, this is a full standard landscape plan. It's colorized, it shows locations of proposed plantings. What it does not show is pre-existing plantings that were on the site to a certain extent before the hotel redevelopment, because layered with the additional plantings that had been proposed, there was just too much on the plan. But you can see, this is a comprehensive planting plan, all of the various species, both of trees and of shrubs, are shown on the right side in a font that you probably can't read, but they're all listed there with great specificity, and then they are tallied at the bottom in terms of total numbers. Most, with maybe a few exceptions, of these trees and shrubs are already, have already been planted, and of course, we would agree to warranty these, and in the event that any of them die, we replace them, not just because that's what you want to see, but that's what guests of the hotel, guests of the restaurant, guests of the, or residents in the apartments will want to see as well. So those are the four topics that we had left with a few weeks ago. I did see on your agenda that there were links to a few additional documents, and I know you routinely will read through those, but I'll just sort of get ahead of it briefly, because I think it's a, it's a short conversation. We saw that you have a letter from the Board of Health simply indicating that for these apartments, the applicant is expected to submit sewer calculations, pay for any INI increase, sign an MOU, and connect to the town sewer system. The connection's already there, of course, from the prior use, but we would pay the applicable fees, and we would provide any INI fee as well, so no objection there. We saw that the Chelmsford Water District provided its departmental comments, simply stating that it had no comment. We also saw that a letter, a fairly routine letter was received from the Fire Prevention Office within the fire department, simply referencing not so much zoning issues, but building and fire code issues, so we've got to comply with NFPA standards, sprinkler systems, for example, mixed occupancy requirements, because we have commercial cooking in connection with the, the restaurant, we have to provide appropriate fire separation, so we're aware of all of this, to the extent that you see fit to condition your approval, that's fine, whether you, quite frankly, do or don't, we're required to comply with these code standards anyway. And then I think the only other letter was one received, again, departmental comment from the police, also stating that the department had no comments. So with that, again, I'll turn it back to the board, but if you do have specific questions about any of the four topics I've addressed, happy to have either Hushy or Ashook address those for you.
Okay, thank you. Evan, do you have anything to add?
Why don't you do it?
All right. Any questions, comments from the board?
I have a question. We have a sustainability checklist, I'm just wondering if you have seen that or have any input, and if you would be able to comply with any of the sustainability efforts?
I don't know if I forward that to them, because there was no new construction.
Oh, I thought it was redevelopment, too.
Yeah, this is, most is internal.
I mean, some parts of it may be applicable, but the scope and scale of the project didn't seem to be, didn't seem to be completely relevant.
Didn't you already send that to them during the daycare?
I don't recall.
I, I don't recall it having been provided to us during the daycare review, it could have been. I'm generally, to answer the question, I'm generally aware of the principles, because I did review this EID bylaw before, coming before you a few weeks ago. We did not run through to, to determine whether we met any of the requirements in the checklist, because again, I also looked at the triggers, and it didn't appear that we would be required to fulfill those, but to the extent that the board would like us to do so after the fact, I suppose we could provide a brief narrative for the record, just explaining the extent to which we comply, but.
That'd be great.
Sure, happy to do that.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, so I was the one that brought up the school bus issue. I, it's not so much I have a concern that the school bus stop is there, it's my concern of kids getting there safely, so I get it's easy for the bus to come down, go around that roundabout, and get out of there. My suggestion might be you take that one parking spot that's there, where there's the dotted line that runs down to it, you create that as a non-parking area, it's a crosswalk, and you also put in on that grass area, a walkway that is going to be kept clear during the winter, because you have that area as a snow remove, a snow storage space, so that the kids can safely get from the building to the, the school bus stop. That's, my concern was them getting to there safely, you put that, now you fill that with snow, now they're walking through the parking lot. I get that in large apartment complexes, that becomes a problem, but there are ways of finding safe ways for children to get to a bus stop, and that was the easiest way of doing that, that one parking spot becomes a crosswalk, you add a path in that little area so that they, that gets cleared during the winter when the snow is there, and the kids are able to get to and from, because around that area, you have the drop-off and you have the restaurant, so that's going to be one of your busiest areas versus the hotel side.
Through the chair, could you identify for me, you're referring to one parking spot and it being converted to a crosswalk, which spot are you referring to?
Right here?
The one that's.
Above.
It's got the dotted line that runs through it.
You'd almost need it to go through that.
Yes, okay, the, the, the one furthest to the.
Yes, the very first one on that area, so as I said, there's a, the best way to describe it is the dotted line runs right through it, and it runs right to the school bus stop, so.
My, my, my client and my client's engineer are nodding their heads that that's okay, we have no objection. We have more than enough parking onsite, as we discussed before, so.
That's why I figured that taking one spot away is not going to be a big issue, but then also, as I said, in that area, that grass area there, just adding a little walkway, that's going to be cleared during the winter, so that the students are able to walk on there without spot not being filled up with snow.
That's fine.
I would also recommend not putting snow storage there on that island as well.
Can I get, just to add to the topic you're all talking about, can I get clarification in the route that children would be walking through this? Like, where would they be coming from? Can you just point it out? Can you just point it out?
Sure, so in terms of where they would be crossing?
Yeah, like where are they?
What door do they come out?
Yeah, like where they.
The entry door.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Is it is it the back? Do you want to identify?
And then also, as you're roading, going their path, show me where the sidewalks are across where they'd be traveling.
This is the area where we have the entrance to apartments.
Yep.
And they would be walking on the sidewalk all the way through.
So is there a clear path from the entrance to the sidewalk to get around the building?
Yeah.
There's, okay, I just can't, it's far away. So I'd follow the path, so they go up around there, they're going across. Can you move a little bit to the right because I can't, you're blocking my view? That's okay. And then they're coming.
You're going basically around this this building here.
Okay, and where's the drop-off door?
That's the drop-off.
No, for the adult daycare.
Well, that's on, that's here.
Okay. So they'd be kind of walking through.
Crosswalk here, that's.
Yeah, I just was wanting to make sure that there was connection through.
The pickup drop-off for the adults is here. And the kids are here, and they'd be walking.
So like, yeah, so great, like a path to get through for clear, clear transfer.
All the apartment entrances are in the back, and there's designated parking in the back as well.
Is there is there walkways that way?
Is there a walkway going this way? Yes, um, just walking around pretty much all the way to the rest of the building.
All the way around? That's probably the way they're going to go.
Um, I mean, yeah, I don't know, I guess it's the same distance maybe. A little more, a little less, I don't know.
All right, thank you. And then I do have other questions, but.
I have another one. Does it have to be pizza?
Dear Joe, can you talk to like?
Do you do ask, would it have to be pizza?
What?
It would have, I missed it.
Any other?
I have other questions.
Yes, go ahead.
On the snow storage on the upper right, the 15,500 square feet, where does that end?
How did you calculate that?
End, end means, I don't know what you mean by ends, but this this whole area is grass. So we, this is all grass, and it is the subject property. But we have calculated only, we can say this is square.
Okay, so can you update that to show where the snow storage would be cut? It says, it just throws it open to me. It doesn't show me where it ends, where it begins. If it, you're going to use the whole space.
So we, so I mean, we can certainly identify it. I think you can appreciate that when you've got plow drivers in the field, they're not going to know that there's an imaginary line that.
Well, they should understand the statement of work in the O and M, and they shouldn't be putting snow where they it shouldn't go.
Okay, is there any objection to the snow not being in an exact square in that location? I mean, the entire area is grassed, right? So.
If you're intending to use the entire area for snow storage, a budding building isn't the best place to put it.
Okay.
We can show a dashed line if that's what.
Yeah, it's just for understanding, appreciate it.
Since you're up there, I have a couple of questions. Evan, can you scroll to the left? Now, back to the snow storage. Left and down a bit. There are two areas, the island with the snow storage right there, and then the island with the snow storage up above it. It says retention area and detention area. Is that stormwater retention and detention?
Yeah, it has been for forever. It's a low, and it collects.
Okay.
And retains or retains retains.
Okay, because snow storage is not typically allowed in those areas.
Since there is room, well, okay, we can remove it, that's fine, just.
For stormwater control, we usually ask that those areas are snow storage prohibited with signs.
That's fine. No, we can, we can remove it. We were trying to make use for 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 lighter lighter storms. But we can remove it, that's not a problem.
Okay.
We do have a lot of room.
So in the O and M, it would be good to also have those areas marked as snow storage prohibited with signs as well?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we can do, we can put a sign there.
So it sounds like that's that would be an acceptable condition. If you require that, we can make that adjustment.
And then while we're here on this picture, the left-hand side, that's the lawn area with all those dots in it. In the landscaping plan, I notice there's limited dots in that area because of new plantings. I just would like to understand the difference because it looks like there's a lot of plantings there in this one area, but in the landscape plan, a bunch of them are missing in that spot.
This, this is not a landscape plan. This is originally when we did this. The landscape plan came up later because honestly, the plants, we started planting the the plants since September, first week of September. So these were very on the site plan, not the planting plan. Those were very symbolic to show that there is green, this is green area. Otherwise, so far, we have planted 136 trees, six to 12 foot tall, and 926 shrubs, and over 36,000 square foot of grass, which we have already cut once. So if you go out there, you will see these shrubs and trees and and green grass all all the time. And this is the chart for it with all the, but buttoned name for it.
No, I understand, I'm just asking the question because I saw the difference, and I was curious. Is that an area that they could put snow? Would we want snow there or not? If it's no, it's because it's wide open, if it should be no snow.
I don't think it matters.
Yeah, so they could put it there if they wanted, okay. That's all, I just wanted to know what was going there, so thank you.
All right. At this point, typically, we don't approve a project without a final set of plans in front of us. With these changes, I would like to continue to the next meeting. I think it'll be a pretty brief approval next meeting with these changes. So if that's okay.
When's your next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
December 10th.
Yep.
Be a long one, come until later.
I think they should go first.
Yeah, I would like to put you guys first at the next meeting.
Can some of the changes be administrative if Evan's okay? I don't know. They're not substantive in terms of.
Typically, we. Other boards. I know, other boards have typically done that. We have been burned a few times by doing that. One of the prior projects is a really good example. So I typically don't like to to do that.
I can submit this plan by Friday.
It is back.
So we will, we'll get you guys first on the agenda so you can get out of here pretty quickly. I know. So at this point, I will take a motion.
Indeed.
Yes.
Can we see the site plan, please? The parking area, please? These parking spaces around the building and near the entrances and all that are very precious. So instead of losing one spot here, is it okay if we propose a walkway through this island from here to here to the school bus stop shelter?
Yeah.
You have a walkway here, you come, you cross, and then you, they can step up on this, on the walkway and come here, so we don't lose that one one spot.
Just real quick question on that. What's in what's in front of those spaces to stop a car from hitting the kid?
What was the question?
What's in front of those parking spaces? Are they putting a curbing in there? Like a hard curbing, like so they don't go over?
This ran it through.
All right.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And this is personal. If I have to come here December 10, I have to cancel all my plans, family plans. These modifications you asked for is very minor. We can submit it even tomorrow.
Virtual. Virtual, you can call in.
Members of the board, what do you think?
What's the question? Can we do it tonight?
Yeah.
Condition, yeah.
Conditions, and then tomorrow, all the plans will be emailed to planning board office, please.
It's okay with me.
I'm okay with it, we make it simply a condition of receiving final plans.
Well, receiving and they're accepted, though, right? I mean, she has big concerns with that crosswalk. What happens if they do it and it doesn't look acceptable?
That that's typically what we've run into.
Right, and that's concerning because it has kids involved, which is dangerous. So, I mean, could somebody else represent him?
So, so Evan, if that's a condition, well, then we have to have a meeting for her, yeah.
I mean, the crosswalk will be exactly like this one that we have proposed. It will be exactly the same thing here coming over, and and there will be a walkway from here to the shelter.
Are you sure it's wide enough?
What?
Well, it has to be, it has to be standard width.
No, no, I understand, but do they have enough space in there to do it? Because right now, they're estimating that they do, but they haven't done the work to guarantee that there's enough space at that corner of that space to still keep it. So it needs to be proven, I think it's important.
Well, it's wider than the parking space, and the parking space is wide enough for the.
The car, nine feet wide.
So for an ADA sidewalk?
Yeah, it needs five feet of walkway, I think, I think it's.
Yeah.
That's all the space there.
Yeah, we have plenty of room.
Thoughts? Well?
I have no problem going forward.
I mean, we did it before, and that, but then the chair look, you know, looks and makes sure that it, that the things that are conditioned are.
So what happens if they're not?
In the plan.
If they're not, then we would.
Yes.
Have them back.
And the condition would fire and.
I think through you, Mr. Chair, I think that you could structure a condition with the specificity that you're seeking. I mean, you could make it specific that the crosswalk has to be identical to the others that exist onsite, that the walkway has to be ADA compliant. We have to do that anyway, but you can be very specific in the condition. If we don't comply, it's like not complying with any other condition of approval. We're out of compliance with the decision, and we would have to come back for a modification.
It's the law.
That too.
I mean, if these comments are really non-technical, I mean, I'm sorry, technical, I would totally understand, but removing a couple of notes, snow storage, putting a walkway, putting a ramp and a walk to the shelter.
Do you guys trust my judgment?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's condition them. All right, so the first condition would be the, let's go with snow storage first. Noting the snow storage in that large area, removing the snow storage from the school bus shelter island and the two detention areas. Detention-retention areas.
And you want signs saying no.
Adding no snow storage to those three areas.
Signage.
Yep. And then the crosswalk from the curved corner near the building to the curved corner of the island with a walkway from that crosswalk to the school bus shelter. And then adding the snow storage plan and notes of snow storage and no snow storage to the O and M plan.
Do we need to designate that the walkway has to be kept clear on the?
Yep, in the O and M plan, the walkway from the building to the school bus stop shelter shall be kept free and clear of snow and debris.
And then also the overage of snow in that upper area gets trucked out.
Yep.
And we will delineate the big area in the east.
Yep.
The, the, so just the limits.
And that if it exceeds what can be, what can be kept onsite, that it will be taken away?
Yes, and that's in the plan.
Yeah, there's a note already, it should be all over here.
This is just a question. So I know winter months are very slow for the.
Can you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry, just a question. So I know winter months are pretty slow for the hotel regardless. Regular parking spots, if they're not in the immediate vicinity of the building, can also be used for snow storage? Is that, I don't know what the regulation on that is, right?
Yes.
Okay, because like November to May, the hotel's not very busy anyway, so there's plenty of parking.
We actually favor that because then the stormwater captures the melt.
Yeah, there's, that's a business thing. It just kind of naturally happens. Here comes, occupancy is low, you don't need the parking, so it kind of works.
I think that was even a suggestion at the last meeting was to use some of the spaces as snow storage.
No, I I I'd want to ask because then I don't want somebody to say, well, you don't have a parking. I don't, I'm just not trying to say that, but it's just a natural business thing, that's all.
Yeah, so much parking.
Yeah, more parking than was needed.
Yeah.
But we, I mean, we typically do that at other hotels that we designate, you know, four or five spots in the corner of the block, wherever, you know, so.
Just make sure you don't block in your request.
No, so we could do it on that, on the far end.
Your hydrants.
I know, I know.
Okay.
So we've done that before.
All right, are we comfortable with those conditions?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, I move, grant a special permit under 195111D6 for 10 independent drive with the conditions as listed. And are there any other sections that need a special permit on this one? There's only one listed on that.
I believe that's it.
There you got it.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
All right. Any quick liaison updates?
We had our LID kickoff with Kleinfeldter and just kind of agreed to agree on what the deliverable is and to whom it's guided. And I think I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed it, so I'd love to, to find out what happened. I had to miss that one.
All right.
Just the other thing, just for in general, North Chumsford's tree lighting is December 6, four to six.
This Sunday?
December 6.
Oh.
The only update I have is that all of the zoning articles passed a town meeting, for those of you who weren't there. The next step is for the CBLT zone to be applied to other areas. We'll probably start that work in January.
Will be looking, targeting April, will be targeting the fall?
I think it'll depend on how quickly we can get things done. I'd like to target, I'd like to target some zoning in the next town meeting.
I mean, if it's just the CD light, I mean, I think by doing those two, we kind of got it processed down for the.
We've also got a lot of other zoning cleanup to do, too, that I want to start looking at in January. And then Kelly Beatty has a new draft of the lighting bylaw that he'd like to bring back to us after a lot of revision. So I'm going to review it with him, and then we'll start all of that work in January as well. Evan, if you could also update us on Jackson Road next meeting, if there are any updates?
Sure.
Okay. I noticed from the minutes that we had talked about that a while ago, and it was around this time that we were going to get an update, so. All right, any other quick updates?
The ZBA, Joel was there and sent out a great, some, do you want to talk about the ZBA meeting on 243 Riverneck?
I did not.
It was Ruth.
Oh, it was Ruth? Oh, okay.
So I can't speak to it.
So, I don't know if you guys remember.
Was it on Zoom? And so you saw the email, didn't you?
No, I, he was at the meeting.
Oh.
So then I got, I got an email, part of the neighborhood, that said Joel and Ruth, so I just assumed it was Joel, and it was like, oh, that's a great night little update. If you guys know, the 243 Riverneck Road was putting, had put in application 40B, but we had hit our limit, and they were denied. So they came in front of the ZBA asking for it again, which was kind of puzzling.
They were already, they were past their time. They were already, they were past their time anyway, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
There, there was a lapse in their.
The reason is, is because at the first denial, um, they're appealing that. But then there were some temporary permits, temporary occupancy permits that were issued. And their position is that those don't count against the, um, against the total numbers.
When they filed in September.
Yeah, so they're going back again under the, the context that those temporary uh, occupancy permits didn't count.
Anyways, they denied it again.
Who's the state?
The Z B A.
Z B A.
Oh.
The appeals, well, no, well, they denied it, no, they moved it to, they denied it and then moved to the meeting.
They, actually, they opened, well, they, they declared safe harbor and then they opened the hearing and they continued it to January?
February.
Something, yeah, Evan was there, actually, at the Z B A meeting, made a guest appearance, so.
Yeah, that was interesting, and then the other meeting that I thought was really interesting was, um, the one-on-one Mill Road, where half the board had to walk out, why was that, Evan? And we were left with like three people on there, I couldn't figure that out.
One was illegal abutter and two recused themselves for, for personal reasons.
Oh, okay, that was weird.
Doesn't happen often.
Do they have to state its conflict of interest like that or do they just let them just walk out?
They can just recuse themselves, they don't have to give a reason.
So the one, um, one Mill Road, this is the one that the town owned, that we sold, we bought, we sold. Harry, um, bought it, this is the one next to the soccer field on Mill Road.
Okay, Anita, any other updates?
Anyways. It got improved.
It's getting late.
Well, that wasn't really interesting, I was trying, well, alright.
How about you tell us next time?
You're usually rushing me.
Okay, fine, alright, I'll shut up.
You can tell us about it next time, how's that?
Okay.
There was a board of health meeting, but I'll give a, there's, there is something that I wanted to bring up, but I'll bring it up next time, because it'll take longer.
Any gap analysis update?
Staff is meeting to review the first draft, November nineteenth.
Okay. Um, alright, we do have meeting minutes?
I just want to ask Joel, when is the health, when is the health meeting, health board meeting?
When, when is it?
When do they, when does it occur?
They typically meet on the first Monday or Tuesday, depending of the month.
It's on, it's online and calendar?
Yeah, but it's not, you can't.
It's on the calendar, but it's not streamed.
You can't record it.
Well, you want to go to it, it's on, currently the next meeting is set for December second.
It's a, it's a stealth meeting.
But monitor the website because sometimes it changes.
No, I want to go, I have an issue. But go ahead.
Alright, anything else? Alright, meeting minutes, uh, September tenth.
Move to approve the meetings, minutes of September tenth.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Deirdre, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, September twenty-fourth minutes.
Move to approve the, uh, meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth.
Just have corrections on the managed growths, um, I can send these to Becky, but it's just last names, which is probably the A I program that helps with this.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll just give the names, it's, the last names are Arroway, Taverner, Rager, and Spawn, I'll just send her spelling correct.
Okay.
Now than that, I have no issues.
So motion from Mike with those corrections.
Second.
Second, who said that?
I did, Anita.
Anita, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
The last one, um, I had Becky update because Deirdre was both present and absent at that meeting.
Want to defer that or?
No, 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 she corrected it and posted it.
Okay.
So, Deirdre, you were considered absent for that meeting since you were only on for like two minutes.
And that, yeah, I, my, my Zoom connection or whatever wasn't working, one thing wasn't work, my Zoom wasn't working, so I walked, I listened to it while I was driving on telemedia instead of being on the thing.
Couldn't count you as, yeah. So, um, so you can't vote for this one, uh, so motion.
To approve the minutes of October eighth.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Marcy, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstained, I didn't read them.
Oh.
Sorry, I got to the first two, but not that one.
Okay.
So I just abstained.
Alright, so Deirdre and Anita abstained on those, that vote, everyone else voted in favor. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.